...to do their schoolwork and unfortunately I think some of that got in the way of the content in the fall. We do have some plans for that. We have a training that we're going to have in the summer for the parents and the students so we can get beyond that system issue and they can start with content on all the programs.
Well, I would hope that this next year's report is 60 or 70 percent retention and 60 or 70 percent pass so we can see that there's -- I'm sure your first year is some things that you probably wanted along the way to make things better. But I would hope that this is a -- this becomes something that is very, very effective in our districts because I can see that, I can see that as our kids grow up, they're growing up on computers. So it's just second nature for them to log in and do something besides silly games.
And compared to nationally, you know, there were some reports that were just out that show that nationally the virtual schools are not meeting adequate yearly progress at the same percentage as traditional schools. So some of those changes are still happening in districts all over the country.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I've got, just because this was all done, you know, I'm just not that familiar. Was 100 or 70 always the -- it seemed like I pulled up a story in the Daily Oklahoman and the numbers were much higher than that that you were expecting. Is that?
Our maximum enrollment for full-time has always been 100.
100.
Yes. And part of that is capacity. We do all of our EOI testing, all of our testing here in this building. And there's just certain types of capacities that we can have, both with staff and with resources. So 100 was manageable for our first year.
Okay. And you say you had, at that time, the school was about $500,000 for launch?
No, they asked for $500,000, that's how much it's in the contract, but actually this year, we only spent $338,000 of that.
Okay. And so, and that's based on the, how many students?
That is based on 100's full-time and then approximately 85 part-time workers.
And this is really something that needs to be said. Jackie did a great job of getting this started for us and basically worked long, long hours monitoring all of those kids and talking to parents. The other part about this from a financial standpoint, this turned out to be okay for us. The average hard state aid per student's around $250 or something like that. So with 100 students, you know, we came very close to breaking even with this, which was something that we, a year ago, didn't think we were going to do. So we were pleased with that. As we started out, we thought that we might have many more students that would want to participate. And I think what happened was Jackie did a good job of making sure these kids understood that they had to work in this program and talked to the parents, interviewed every single family, made sure they understood this was not going to be an easy kind of situation as an alternative going to school. You're going to school when you're in this program. Jackie, I just think you did a great job. Appreciate it. From every standpoint, you did really well. Second semester, it really kicked in. Kids started to understand what was going on.
Thank you, Carl. And Jackie, please, my questions are only for information, have nothing to do with anything else. So the, how many are enrolled for '13 and '14?
Well, we haven't officially enrolled anybody because the contract hasn't been approved, but we do have 28 that showed interest prior to the end of school. And then you have full applications that are ready to be officially enrolled. And then most of our enrollments come during the open enrollment in July.
Okay. So is that the July 19th date?
Correct. Yes. We'll have an open enrollment again and we'll have up to 100 at that point.
And is there anything that we can do to help encourage or promote that?
I think one thing that would be great is working through, I think some of our enrollment was down a little bit because of understanding of the virtual school. I think that places like the TAPS or something that can get the information out would be wonderful ways to teach the schools about virtual school and teach the parents. So that kind of connection would be wonderful.
Okay. And can you just kind of walk me through, I see that the truancy piece is huge. What happens when they miss, say, seven lessons are overdue?
Sure. Yeah. Well, what the system does, we have a system called ConnectIt. And that is a daily, it's up, it is up-to-date what they've done, what they need to do, what is late, if they're late for real time. So at any point, a parent can log in and see that, a student can log in and see that, or we can log in and see that. If a student is behind in lessons, we do progress checks on a weekly basis and we contact the parents and tell them, "You are behind in your lessons," or "You haven't logged in in X amount of days," or "You're failing in class." We send that to the parents, both by postal mail and by webmail, which is in the system so that they're aware of what is going on. I do phone conferences with all of the parents of students who are failing four or more classes or any student who's missed more than 15 lessons. We talk about in the conference what the interventions would be for the next school or for the next week for them to work on. And then if they don't meet them, then I call them back again the next, the next week. We gotta do that for all the full-time students. The attendance, we keep track on a daily basis. If they miss three days, then we contact them. Unfortunately, sometimes we don't make any contact for three, five, eight days, but we keep track, trying. We mail, we email, and we call. And then if by the next day, you can't get a hold of anybody, or if they have improved their attendance, we have to drop them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes, sure. I'm curious if there's a way to track individual students and see how they're performing in virtual school compared to how they performed when they were in a physical building? And, you know, we can get an idea of what kinds of kids are going to be likely to succeed in virtual school and who we should be.
Sure. That's a really hard one. I have Yodle talking points, I don't have the hard data on slides, but I can tell you that many of the students who enroll in virtual school are students who were not successful in traditional school. But we have had a number of students this year who have gained more credit in one year in virtual school than they had in any other year that they were in school. And we also have some students who are out of school for a year or a year and a half who managed to graduate this year. So this is a great option for some of those students. Now, I have to say that we do have some on the other side of that. We have some honored students from traditional schools who have come into this and have not passed their courses. One of the things that I can see as an indicator more than grade is attendance. If a student has great attendance at school, they tend to do better in virtual school than those students who were truant in their traditional school are usually the same students who are truant in my school. But yes, we can definitely get that in there.
And any other questions? And would you, would you give that for Laura?
Yes.
Or get to Craig who can get to Laura? Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Thanks very much.
The chairperson, the superintendent, and more members, tonight we're presenting the results of our April treasury report. We've been previously provided various treasury reports in hard copy and this is our PowerPoint presentation. Our current cash balances total $252 million and 24 cents, or 20, let's start over, no, 24 cents. Again, we calculate those looking at our operating funds, which includes our general fund, building fund, child nutrition fund, totals $99,986,446. Our debt service, which is our cash funding for our debt servicing the principal and interest on both of our bonds, totals $39,070,643. Our bond fund, which is the proceeds from the sales over the years for our MAPS and Yester Kids, now totals $106,295,149. And the last group, our other funds, includes our insurance fund, activity funds, and gift funds, which is totals $6,672,146. As before, we're cooperating with about 21, or with 21 banking institutions, and we have 191 different banking accounts that we reconcile each month. No change in interest rates for the districts, low of .01 percent, high of 15.15 percent. We're in full compliance with Oklahoma School Law for all collateral. And we have no long-term investments for our cash fund. Historically, cash balances district-wide to the district. 2010, we ended up at $267 million. District-wide, this year, we're at $252 million as of April. Interest earnings reflecting the declining interest rates for the district's investment year-to-date are $151,000. And a slide we added last month for our March reporting, I want to go ahead and include it, thought it'd be helpful to our readers. This is our Ad Valorem tax collection. This is as of April. So Ad Valorem collections benefit our general fund, building fund, and sinking fund, as notated on the left. On our columns, we show our 2012 actual collections. And Ad Valorums are categorized by current year and prior year for each of those funds. Our levy rates for general fund, of course, are fixed from year to year at 35.96 mils. Building fund, 5.14 mils. And sinking funds are variable mileage rate based on our upcoming principal and interest debt for the upcoming year. With the calculations based on the net asset valuation, the next column shows our projected collections on levy rates for Ad Valorem. $68,326,536 was projected for general fund. And as of April, we've collected 97.44 percent. Building fund, we have projected $9,766,363. And we've again collected 97.44 percent. And finally, for the sinking fund, we've projected needs of $34,559,327, with collections running at 97.69 percent. When we establish our mil rates for all of the funds, we're allowed to put in a delinquency rate collection because there's always an assumption we won't collect 100 percent. That's where you'll start seeing some benefit come in on our prior year collections. No way to project how those will be, but we do look at what is sitting on the receivables at the county. They give us that information about audits of each year. And we can evaluate the protests or delinquent taxes sitting on the rolls that haven't been collected to give us the idea of how we make benefit for our prior year collections in the current year. That's a lot of prior year, current year dialogue. A slide we are adding this month, wanted to show some trend information for our net state aid. State aid, as we know, started to bottom out in 2010. This is in millions of dollars. This number is net after we call, what we call chargeables. In school finance, the formula has the equity or local revenue balancing process. And what that does is you have, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, our factor rates per student. And then each district, based on their location in the state of Oklahoma, is reduced for what we call chargeables based on local wealth. And for us, one of our chargeables is the previous slide, Ad Valorums. As our Ad Valorem goes up, it reduces our state aid formula. It's equity balancing across the state for schools that may be in low property tax areas or high property tax to try and make sure all students have a fair funding source from the state. As you can see here, for each of these years, we've mentioned in some previous reports that generally the state provides three updates on state aid. And the first one comes in July, it's called the DEGAT. We had joked about, the acronym actually stands for the state as best guess at this time. This is our first preliminary funding that we get in July. Then we get a mid-year in December, which usually provides some corrections based on how state collections are coming in and how student enrollment has progressed. And then we'll get our actual final allocation at the end of this month. So for school finance, that's one of the difficulties in making projections for how the year's going to turn out is what is that final allocation that's going to be in June. For each of these years presented, that is our final notice. It is not our final for 2013. We have not received that. That's still our mid-year. So you can see the trend is improving. However related to that, our federal dollars that we were awarded over this timeframe during the economic downturn, the ARRA monies have wrapped up. And so they're not quite seeing that the state monies are coming in as quickly as those shore-up dollars in the beds have gone away. If there's any questions about this information or anything else, I'll be happy to do my best.
I think if you could go back to that last slide one more time, I'd love it. The Ad Valorem tax, the Ad Valorem taxes, we have what's called horizontal equity, where the more you get in Ad Valorem taxes, the more you get state aid. The issue here, though, is most of these years, our Ad Valorem tax revenue's been pretty flat and pretty much the same. If you look at this and you go back to 2008, 2008 we had about 40,000 kids in the district and we had 107 million in state aid. 2013, we're about 4,000 more kids and we have state aid that's only 99 million. So the issue here is, you know, you're going to have a lot of legislators that are going to try to tell you, "Well, you know, things are getting better." Well, for school districts that are growing, it's almost a double whammy because we haven't got as much money and we have more students to try to stretch it out with.
And there's been legislation this year even regarding changes for Ad Valorem collections as far as intangible property. And I think there's a lot of scrutiny and just analysis going on now for the impact for all of the school districts for the exclusion of intangible property for many of our property tax rolls. Always a lot of trying to make a projection with incomplete information. Is there anything else?
Any questions from anyone? Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you. We now have our couple comments and there are four people to assign names and I'm going to call your name. Jamie Ferret, if you will, come down to the front. Catherine, and I'm sorry, I don't know your, I can't read your last name.
Montgomery.
Montgomery, thank you very much. And Edie Jackson. And Dixie Hyatt Hendricks. Eddie Jackson, I'm sorry. Bealik Linden. Jamie? Why don't we start with you? Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, I'd just like to say that I am a proud mother of two elementary school children in the Oklahoma City Public Schools. Well, one that will be in middle school actually next year. It's very rare that a topic comes up that touches what I call my mama heart and says to me, "I cannot stop myself from speaking." And it really surprises me that there's not just a room full of people doing this very same thing. Because we all know with the tragedy of the May 20 tornado, we all know that it was a very tragic event. So I quickly put my thoughts together, and I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence, but I quickly just, what I did was I threw together just a quick synopsis of kind of public schools and what they are and what happened there. And we all know that public schools began back in the 1600s. And that by 1870, each state had some form of free elementary school for those children. And since that time, I don't have to tell everybody, but we've come a long way maybe, and that the face of public education morphed and changed with the needs of those children that they served. And that, but not only were the educational needs of those children met, but most of all, the social welfare needs came into play. And there were lots of programs put into place to look at those social welfare needs. And I'll just rattle off a few because it helps me to make my point. We have school nurse programs. We have school counselors. We have occupational therapists, we have speech therapists, we have physical therapists. We have all sorts of after-school programs. We have nutritional services that do everything from breakfast to free and reduced lunch to feeding children over the weekend and over the summer. We have backpack clubs that help those families in need. These are all things that we do for our children. There's intercession. And I've even been in a few meetings where there's kind of been some spatterings of talks of extending school days and years to help encompass and form like social, kind of a safety net, if it were, for some of those children who need that. So with that being said, when you look at that list, I think it becomes really clear that these programs were all designed to help improve the quality of a child's life, which is terrific. But I come before you today with a plea for one more initiative. But it's not designed to improve the quality of life, but to protect the very life of a child. Oklahoma City Public Schools cannot improve the quality of a child's life without first safeguarding that life. So I reach out to you today with my mama heart to ask that you consider a bond issue to implement safe room shelters in every Oklahoma City Public School. It shouldn't be a question as to whether these shelters can be made available. It should be a given. Because we all know it's not a matter of if, but when the next fatal weather event occurs.
Thank you very much. And certainly, we are all tremendously aware of the situation in Moore and our heart is with all of those families. And we all are touched by it every day.
That makes it really hard to come up and talk after this. I met you about a month ago. My name is Catherine Montgomery. I'm the principal and founder of the Preservation and Devine Studio that is part of one of the proposals on the consideration for the purchase and redevelopment of a public school. Real quickly, I just wanted to state that there is an error in our proposal with Sunflower and that is that we do not need due diligence time until December 2014. We only need that until March of 2014. And the reason why we're asking for that is because we're going to be in partnership with the Oklahoma Housing and Finance Agency and they have a specific timetable for their applications at consideration of those. So we would be able to waive due diligence at that time and then we would close whenever the state Oklahoma Housing and Finance Agency would be ready to take that up, which we think would be about six months. We've all had a chance to look at all of the proposals and I think that there are some key points to address. One is that the building is individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places as Old Douglas High School and that happened in April of 2007. This makes the building eligible, certified redevelopment of the project of the building to be eligible for state and federal tax incentives. And I also think that there are some key points in the urban renewals proposal that should be talked about. Our proposal is specifically geared towards the first point, which is seeking a certified historic rehabilitation using the Secretary of the Interior Standards Rehabilitation that would be reviewed and approved by the National Parks Service. We would look, we think that housing and neighborhood stabilization are key for that area and that this project as a catalyst to make those things happen would be an appropriate redevelopment. Our team knows exactly how to preserve these kinds of projects because we've done them before. In fact, personally, I've overseen more than 2 million square feet and $188 million for rehabilitation in a previous position. Now, as a business owner, we currently have over 300,000 square feet and over $40 million of rehabilitation projects underway. Our primary team member has successfully achieved certified rehabilitation of similar historic schools, converting that to housing and including ground-up construction for adjacent vacant lots. This project is of keen interest to me personally and professionally and we are confident that our restoration of the auditorium would be an asset to the community groups that may have had a dream for a very long time to see and use that. Other community resources that could be made available, such as the pool and grounds, are also of interest to us. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Edie Jackson?
The chairperson, the superintendent, and the chairman of the board. I'd like this to go right to you, I've had you about a month ago and we appreciate all my hard work, investment, we very much appreciate having the opportunity to tell you what we would like to do with state this year. As I said before, under proposals states, we want to bring Lancer to, we have had a number of meetings with Lancer and they're a hobby, hobby of ours. So we think that we will be successful in bringing it to the table. A proposal that this can run to that line without having to submit proposals, can be a little bit more, not a lot, but a little bit more than we are. I think people consider, though, the idea that the purpose sometimes can add up to be greater than the sum of parts. And as I stated in our proposal, we believe the government's place to assault 500 million of nationwide constituencies at school board. We think that Lancer can contribute enough to the community of students in the area with private support, to a screen of that place, to find a higher education to that place. So I know your proposal is, I really do, don't get me wrong, I'd like to yield the rest of my time and I'd like to pray that you make a better point on this.
Thank you. Dixie Hyatt Hendricks.
Hi, I'm Dixie Hyatt Hendricks. I'm a Class and SAS, PTA president and I'm here to represent the parent, staff, and students of Classen. I want to thank you first of all for your very hard work in service of our children. They're our most precious resource. I also want to thank you personally for your decision last week to reverse your previous denial of adding district transfers for next year. As you now know, this violated three of your own policies clearly stated in the Oklahoma City Public School student handbook. The past, present, and future leadership of the Classen PTA and 99 percent of parents, teachers, and students at Classen are in support of your reversal decision. However, I understand that a new non-transfer policy just for Classen SAS has been released to the press. Bewildered parents, students, and teachers are scared and they don't understand. They come to me and say, "Why? What is the reasoning behind this decision? Do they want to close Classen? Do they want to turn Classen into a normal high school? Why does this just apply to Classen?" I don't have any answers to give and when they come to me. It's my hope that at some point, this board will make it clear what their intention is towards Classen and the reasoning behind it. I hope the board is not trying to punish Classen for some unknown reason. Over the past six weeks, I have heard directly from board members in print and in the media who speak of Classen scornfully, charging that Classen is elitist and entitled, that Classen parents are subversive and insubordinate, that Classen has its head tours and only takes the top 10 percent of students, none of which is true. It is hard not to take such strong language personally. I truly do not believe I'm being disloyal or treasonous to restate what has been on TV, in emails to me, and in recordings of your very own board meetings. I don't understand this. This is a school that makes do in a subpar building, limited school transportation, and technology from the 1990s. The students, staff, and parents work very hard every day to be successful. Who's supporting Classen besides the parents, teachers, and staff? It would be It would be good to hear one single positive word of support from the board. I hope the board will look at district policies that make it difficult, if not impossible, for many qualified students to come to Classen to apply. One of the most important factors is the lack of transportation to Classen SAS. There are only three buses that are allowed to come to Classen, covering an extremely limited area. Many Oklahoma City parents are unable to provide transportation to Classen SAS, so they don't even apply. When founded, transportation from all areas of the Oklahoma City Public School District was provided to Classen, much as it is today for applicants to the various academies at other Oklahoma City public high schools. However, over the years, most of the transportation to Classen was consistently limited by the district, then stopped. Is the board willing to treat Classen like every other high school in the district and provide transportation for qualified students? I would be so happy to talk to any board member about these issues. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time today. My name is Felix Linden, and I'm an eighth-grade language arts teacher at Roosevelt Middle School in Oklahoma City. On Tuesday, May 21st, when we arrived at school, conditions were so unprofessional that we had to question why we were having school. Low water pressure made getting in the restrooms for our 900-plus students and 50-plus staff impossible. The school water fountains were rendered useless. The general consensus by those present was one of the orderment because those with the power to close school for the day had yet to do so. Thankfully, the entire student body either didn't show or was checked out throughout the course of the day. Extra kudos should be given to our students for having a better-than-expected attitude given what they were faced with. If not of vote or no confidence, a deep and thorough examination of the decision process should be given to our district leadership, however, due to the simple fact that students and our faculty's safety, health, and well-being were compromised. We deserve a full explanation as to why school was not closed and a plan for what will happen in the future should similar circumstances arise. We, the undersigned, stand in solidarity for our profession, stand the staff, and our students. We also extend our hand to work with you as you develop policy to address the issues faced by us and others throughout our district. Sincerely, Felix Linden and the undersigned at Roosevelt Middle School. Before the meeting, I had an opportunity to find out why the decision was made about having school the day after the tornado was on May 20th. And basically, what we'd like to know is that, I feel comfortable in speaking on behalf of those undersigned, is that we're just requesting better communication from the district when it comes to decisions made for students and parents and staff as relates to our jobs and their time as students. Thank you very much, and I hope you know.
Amen. Madam Chair, amen.
Okay, we've had some special business, and that is to adopt a resolution honoring Shirley Darrell. And Craig, could I ask you to read that citation, please?
Resolution, whereas Ms. Shirley Darrell served with distinction as a board member on the Oklahoma City Public Schools Board of Education from 1981 through 1982, and whereas Ms. Darrell served as an Oklahoma County Commissioner from 1983 through 1998, during which time she was known to push for change and held the distinction of being the first African American to serve as an Oklahoma County Commissioner. And whereas Ms. Darrell was a member of the biracial commission on desegregation appointed by U.S. District Judge Luther O'Anan to push school desegregation on the city public schools in the 1970s. And whereas Ms. Darrell served as an executive director of the YDA-UCI and was director of community services for the Oklahoma City Housing Authority. And whereas Ms. Darrell was director of the Black Liberated Arts Center and a member of the Oklahoma City Arts Council, the Oklahoma Health Systems SubArea Council, the American Marketing Association, Helpful Hand, and the Oklahoma Health Recreation and Fitness Council. And whereas Ms. Darrell passed away on May 8, 2013. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Oklahoma City Public School Board of Education honors the memory of Ms. Shirley Darrell and officially recognizes her tireless efforts to make life better for the citizens of Oklahoma City and surrounding areas through her extensive involvement in private, public, nonprofit, and civic organizations and causes surrounding issues like desegregation, health, housing, education, and the arts.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the resolution.
No good.
Motion by Jayden, the seventh, by Ron. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Having received seven high votes, zero may votes, motion carries as may.
The next item is 7.04, a consideration of the offer to purchase the district property at Page Woodson School Building.
Madam Chair, did you intentionally skip 02 and 03?
I'm so sorry. Did I miss them? I appreciate it. No, I did not intentionally skip.
Would you like to, Madam Chair, would you like to take a part of 7.02?
Let's see, we've got the financial reports, the 701 resolution, the 702 Santa Fe South Middle School, and Santa Fe charter contracts. And we have those.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Laura, you want to talk about these contracts?
Sure. These are the last of the charter contracts to be presented for the school year that would begin 2013 and run to 2015. These, the changes were made consistent with the other contracts that were approved last year and earlier this year. The only change that the administration agreed to that Santa Fe requested involved the numbers of students. There was an increase for the number of students at the middle school to 400, I believe from 380, and also to 600 from 550 at the high school. And the administration recommended increasing those numbers. And so the contracts are being presented for approval. I didn't see if Mr. Brewster is here.
And Laura, may I just ask, did you say this was for 2013 through 15, or it says on our information, it says 16?
Oh, sorry, it is 16. It's three years, sorry.
Okay. And I would just like to say that we've had a wonderful relationship with Chris Brewster and this group, and it's been a very nice working relationship. So do we need, we need a motion to approve?
Any other questions?
Yes, please.
I noticed that we are keeping sixth grade after middle school, and I thought we had decided generally that we were leaving sixth grade back to elementary schools.
Well, this is a charter school, and Santa Fe South really has been very, very successful in the area of really, they aren't really recruiting, but they've got a lot of, I think they've got a force for good down in the southern part of our school district. Chris Brewster's done a really outstanding job, I think, but the whole state kind of looks at him and shakes their head because he just has the wonderful things. Right now, we want to continue going through sixth grade.
And that would be the case for other charter schools and intermediate schools.
Maybe, maybe down the road, we might want to look at changing that. But for right now, especially at Santa Fe South, the kind of issues you've got with overcrowding on the south side of our school district, this really does make sense.
I would just add, I did tell Mr. Brewster about tonight's meeting, but he did tell me his home was originally damaged in the 820 tornadoes, and it was further damaged in the 1 plus Friday night. He was in the process of trying to move his family and get them relocated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? You have a motion? Laura, would you put that, is there a second? By Gail? I'm sorry, by Ruth. Call for the vote.
Having received seven high votes, zero may votes, motion carries as may.
And then we have the amended Harper Academy contract. Laura?
Yes. This was just a slight amendment. Harper Academy was approved a couple of board meetings ago. Their location that they had selected for their site turned out to be within 1,000 feet of a drug rehabilitation facility, which is not allowed by law. The State Department told they finished finding their location, so they did. And this just updates the contract to reflect that new location around Culbertson.
Is this the school that was supposed to be on 10?
Yes, it is. I think it was supposed to be like 39th and 10. Yes.
Do you know where Culbertson Drive is?
Culbertson, and so may I correct you, is over towards the Health Sciences Center? Correct? It's north of that, between, between Stone Hall and Field.
And this school is to support, isn't it, to her high contract? Isn't that the focus of her high contract?
Well, they're a charter. I don't believe that they had any restrictions on who they admitted, although they may be wanting to focus on trying to reach those students who have dropped down. There weren't any restrictions on their admissions?
Any other questions or discussion? Motion for the amendment? Motion by Ruth? Is there a second? Second? Gail, and we'll call for the vote.
Having received seven high votes, zero may votes, motion carries as may.
Now we will have a discussion on the offers on the purchase of Page Woodson School Building. I have some more. Yes.
I would just like to say, I believe that we do have more than one really nice and interesting offer of this property, and since we're not in the profession of city planning and maybe in the position of making the best choice on how the property will be used in the future, I would prefer to defer to Cura and let them enter into contract with Urban Renewal and let them work with those companies who are bidding to find out what's going to be the best for the neighborhood, and who's going to respect the historic preservation, and who is going to make the best decision for the city and the community that we might recommend.
Could you vibrate on that a little bit?
Let me, sure, let me just, maybe, Laura, do you want to give us the rundown of this first? Would that be easier?
Well, I mean, I think you're, in Board docs, you have the various offers.
Yes.
And so you could see the same thing I'm looking at, too, about the different proposals, updating the one that Ms. McHenry did for Sunflower regarding the time period. With a Cura's offer, you would be selling for the price of $100,000 now, plus the proceeds from any future resale. You do not have any control over that dollar amount on the future resale. So, and it would be the net of resale. Currently, our contract is that the seller, and the buyer pays all the expenses associated with the sale of the property to minimize the amount of expenses that the district pays. So the district's currently only paying the commission to Mr. Sullivan when we close these properties. You know, somewhat savings there. There, a Cura would then, if the property was sold, there would be no necessarily timeframe either as to how long they would hold that property and when you might ever see proceeds from a sale. But you would no longer be the owner and no longer in control of nor liable for that particular structure. You have several different offers then from different companies. I think they're each explained. I believe Mr. Jackson's company is the Renaissance JFK LLC. He spoke to you last board meeting and this board meeting. This is a newly formed company for this purpose, and they gave some description of what they wanted to do tonight, as well as in their offer. The Okhills Private Equity Fund for $800,000 has 120 days due diligence and then 15 days to close after that. And MD LCO LLC was $805,000 to be renovated and 180 days due diligence. So I think that sort of is the overall of the offers. Sunflower Development was $900,000, 10, as they said. They were looking for the tax credit, and I believe Ms. Montgomery indicated it would be March of 2014, not December of 2014.
Okay, I have a question relative to Laura's comment. Would we have a separate contract with Ocura that would then allow us with the Urban Renewal authority that, I understand that we would participate in that sale. Is there an agreement how we participate? And I, from my standpoint, the $100,000, and I'm just, and I'm asking you, Laura, that releases us of any liability? The property is really under their control at that, is that right?
That is the way I understand it. I don't see Leslie Bachelor here. Oh, somebody's here, is from up here. I didn't see Leslie. At one previous time, Leslie did indicate some sort of contract, but there wasn't a proposal for a contract here. It was simply that they would purchase it, and then they would be responsible for the marketing of it. Let Cura address that.
My name is Kathy O'Connor, and I'm the executive director of Urban Renewal. Our offer is that we would purchase the property for $100,000 and then would agree in whatever legal format is appropriate that you would receive any proceeds from any future sale, resale of the property by Urban Renewal. The point of our proposal is that Urban Renewal is in the business of redeveloping property. This school is in an urban renewal area and is in an area where Urban Renewal has put a great deal of effort and emphasis over the past few years to redevelop. And we have a great deal of interest in making sure that it is used and redeveloped in a way that is compatible with the rest of the area. We have a long-term relationship with the OU Medical Center and the neighborhood that's around Page Woodson, and we want to make sure that this is developed in a way that's compatible with both the neighborhood and the medical center. So that, I hope that helps explain our proposal, and we'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Any other questions?
Because we would provide to you any proceeds upon the resale of the property.
But there's no guarantee that we would get any proceeds of the resale of the property.
No guarantee that you would, you don't have any knowledge of what the resale value might be, or if there would be any proceeds. That's right.
But if they sold it with the same price?
With, let's just, wait just a minute, are you finished?
Okay. If they sold it with the same price that we sold for 95,800, we would have $825,000 plus $1,200,000. I think that your goal is to make money for the district as well.
Yes, we would hope that the proposer, the proposals that you've received tonight, we would also receive, possibly in addition to others, and that they would offer similar amounts for the purchase of the property.
So why would it benefit this board for you to be a go with one? And how would it benefit any of the other groups when they want this property at whatever price? How is it beneficial?
I believe it's beneficial to the board because the school does have some historical significance and some significance to the community. And the school district isn't in the business of redeveloping historic properties for reuse, for some other use other than as an educational facility. Urban renewal is, and we believe that it will help the community, it will help the appearance that we're trying to preserve this part of Oklahoma City and this part of Oklahoma City's history, and that the school district is interested and committed to doing that as well as the Urban Renewal authority. I think that the way that it helps the proposal, proposers, and they may argue with this a little bit, but Urban Renewal has a very set process for the redevelopment of the property. We have very strict expectations about design and quality and construction and timeframes. And while that- And while that necessarily may not always be perceived by redevelopers as a good thing, it does in the long term help them manage the process and develop a quality product that the community is happy with. And that's part of our goal.
Well, there's two issues. One, Mr. Horni's not here. And I think it's very important that this board decides a board. And I would like to look more at the Urban Renewal Authority's offer and benefit that it may have because I'm a little suspicious about who would benefit. Is it University of Oklahoma would benefit? Is it the, whatever group that it, because for me, being a historian, I would, the historical value of this building is what's really important to me. And I had hoped that this board was going to use that to make our nine hundred North Line. The last we spoke, that's what we were discussing. So, and we, I don't necessarily want to discuss that, but I really think that for this board to take action tonight is not fair to Phil because Phil is a vital part of this board. He's had an extensive interest in this property from day one. And I would like to have more time to study the effects of the Urban Renewal and just exactly who the players are in that time's framework.
Well, I also, you know, and I hear what you're saying and all, and you're speaking up from the community, and I hear you speaking up from an education perspective. And I see here the offer that's on the table on Friday. And that their proposal for Langston University, which is also, you know, from the community and with that being an old nugget, and that I know that the history of lots of the ones that have gone on, they went to Langston University, that would put that as a community type of stake, if you will. So, you know, with us having something on the table, with us hearing the different rationales as far as how that would be a hundred thousand dollars, or they sold it for eight hundred thousand dollars, will there be a difference? And from what I'm hearing, you know, that you may already have what you're looking for and you can have a different sale. And again, as they said, the last I heard, I was thinking about nine hundred North Line as well. And so she went ahead and didn't know the difference. I didn't know that there was a change until they came forth on the agenda.
If you're going to talk about historical preservation, one of our speakers is extremely active in that. In fact, she has the highest bid. She's very interested in the Urban District. I think we should all look at as well.
I also think that you have to take a, us getting elected to where elected by the government, you also have to look at the money issue. I am not, nor was I elected to sit there and hand out and not take into consideration monies for this lot. Money is a very important thing.
Chair, I know that we table this until Mr. Horni can be at the meeting.
If you do table it though, let me interrupt you, Jay. If we do table it, I think we owe an apology to individuals that came and listened. That'll be their minimum third meeting that they come to and still not have an answer. I mean, this board can drag things on more than I've ever seen in my life. I think we owe them an apology.
And I also would like to say that even as the board's asked, when we have these types of, you know, changes as far as in conversation, that I would like to think, oh, we are, this board comes out on an agenda for us to take up on consideration for votes.
Chair, point of order, we have a motion to table. We need to have either a second and move forward.
There's a motion and a second. Before the board votes, would you like to have any consideration of any impact that might have on any of these bidders?
Yes, please.
It's my understanding that once a table, a motion to table has been made, that no discussion can happen until a resolution to that motion.
So, I guess we'll call it. I guess we'll call it. I guess we'll call for the vote.
Motion is to table the agenda item before us, which is seven point zero four, consideration of five offers to purchase the district property Page Woodson. We have a motion, and we have a second.
I'm calling for the vote.
Motion having received, four nay votes, three I-votes, motion failed.
Okay, so, is there further discussion on? Lauren, do you want to talk about?
No, I would just, if the motion is in order, I would a little bit accept the high vote, the high bid of nine hundred thousand.
One second question, Florida Development.
Okay, and I've got some discussion there. We're looking at nine hundred thousand for, Ms. Montgomery, are you still here? Is she still here? Yes. We have now, you are now looking at, from due diligence, from now until March of two thousand and fourteen? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, we're looking at June, July. We're looking at about nine months. Let me just say that this concerns me, that we're going to have this another nine months of due diligence before this would, and then to close another six months after. We've got bids for forty-five days of due diligence, not nine months, although it's a little bit less in money. Is this, is this the best timeline?
The process that we would engage in would be an application process with the Oklahoma Housing and Finance Agency. And they only accept applications for this particular program twice a year. One, July third, which, we don't have time to make July third. We should have started six months ago if that was the case. So, it takes about six months to get to the, to prepare the application. And their next, the next time you submit applications is in January. So, putting it at March gives them an opportunity to decide.
And gives them the opportunity to decide what?
To grant the nine percent Oklahoma Housing and Finance Agency tax credits for housing.
And if they don't grant that, then you all are in a position to purchase this. Is that correct?
I can't, I, no, I wouldn't necessarily say that. It is part of our funding package, but it wouldn't necessarily kill the project.
Okay.
Chair, I believe I heard a motion by Mr. Milliken to accept the offer from Sunflower Development. I don't know if I heard a second. Was there a second on that motion?
Do you mean it's still discussed or do we have?
You can still discuss. I'm just trying to make sure.
I don't think there's been a second made.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure the board knows where we're at.
I'll second. Okay. Read the second, and we're still discussing. Okay, Bob?
I have a question. What would be your last question to other bidders? If you just pass this, doesn't that preclude or exclude the possibility of asking the questions of the other bidders?
It would.
I just, if that was not a definitive, well, a definitive answer as far as this might not, you know, I didn't have, didn't hear from the lady here. She said that she didn't think that it would, you know, for to pass up other offers that are on the table in a shorter due diligence time. That, for me, is like rolling the dice.
Laura, maybe you can help us as a point of order. I think that we're interested in speaking with the other and discussing other bids without having to vote on each one individually. Is that?
I think you could do that. I don't see, you could ask questions of those other bidders. They were all invited to be here.
Okay, do we have to withdraw this motion?
No, I think that you can have the discussion. The low track has a reason otherwise. I don't see why you can't have discussion about that.
The motion and the second are on the table. You can continue your discussion. And when you're ready to call the vote, you can do so.
Okay. So, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Jackson some questions, please. I share my board member Bill's, I think, enthusiasm for having Langston in northeastern Oklahoma City. I think that makes great sense to me. I do know that O triple C and many colleges around the state go off for free tuition to high school seniors. I'd just like to have any type of plan like that that would help students do what it does in Langston before to go. Not my knowledge, but I can tell you a part of it, Chair.
Yes.
One, look, if you may have a statement that, I think, in the dark, it's so, it's historical. After development, Trump nucleus is currently in Oklahoma City, in Bricktown, doing a historic property. They do historical properties in nineteen states. And so they are absolutely in the historical, with the aspects of historical restoration as anyone before.
How many campuses do you have in Oklahoma City?
I think it's just that one campus.
Is that part of the, going to this, are you wanting to take out of there and go to this location?
Certainly, that leads.
How many students currently attend that location?
I think, listen, it's about thirty-four, thirty-five students. Of course, city is under a boundary. They say they're broke, they say they're broke from the city, but they're outside the campus. But they say they're broke because they're in the cities, and it's a very obvious reason.
My question is that when you first made your first statement, you alluded to that you may not have a Langston on board, you would get them on board. That would be my concern because, you know, I know some of the artisans that went to this school, Ralph Woll, Ellison, Langston, you know, some great. And so I would be interested in that as well. But I heard you maybe say that you're not for sure whether Langston is on board.
Well, we have to have a building before this, you know, this contract. And as a development, it's hurting your, just what you're doing. But I can tell you, for me, especially if you have, we're not sure, I would say, about both sides are highly optimistic.
Can I ask Laura a question? So, can you make this up to change upon that language? That, whether you're going to come aboard with, with the board or void the contract?
Well, I believe Mr. Jackson's saying that they can't know that Langston will commit to it until the renovations are fully completed or at least designed. Is that? And I understand Langston would have to terminate at least to.
And we're obviously in a position to help or to support. But I believe that for, for kind of situation, my, to, to, to.
You can, and we could consider whether it had a reversionary clause. I'll give this board an example. You sold a facility, and I, Terry Wolf would have to remind me, but went to Variety Health, Lafayette School, to Variety Health. The boards approved that with the contingency that Variety Health renovated it and used it for a community clinic, and that they did so and had it up and running within, I believe, three years. So, they had a timeframe for that. If that didn't occur, then this building reverted back to the district. However, I will say, the piece about reversion was in part because the price for which it was sold was much lower than where a nonprofit, and you have the ability to sell to a nonprofit for a much lower price, but you're required to have that reversionary clause. This is a little bit different sale, type of sale. It is possible, yes, to negotiate such a thing.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Can we have our realtor?
Yes, Mr. Sullivan's here.
Maybe even shed some background information.
My name's Bob Sullivan. I've worked with each of the people that submitted proposals. And there, every one of them seems to be very well qualified to do what they want to do and to have that capacity to close the transaction. One of the abilities that you also have though is to make a counteroffer. And that counteroffer can contain any, anything you want to put in. Whether it be price, yes, we would sell this to you, but here's the price that we want. It could be time, it could be a length of time to give you a contract. For example, in the Langston, in the, Mr. Jackson's offer, he has a forty-five day due diligence, which means inspection of the property or anything that he wants to do. And in that forty-five days, he can cancel and not have anything at risk. You can require them to provide a lease with Langston during that timeframe or give him an extra fifteen days, or you might want to increase the price. Or if you want to look at Okura to give them some timelines to close a secondary transaction for X number of dollars. They have all these options, but you don't have to be bound by what they've offered. So, if you like the nine hundred thousand, that gives you a point of reference. If you like the forty-five days, that gives you a point of reference. If you're concerned about what are they going to do with the property, we can give them some time to affect that.
We like a cool million in forty-five days.
You have five people that have an interest in your property. We were here two years ago, and we had a fifty thousand dollar offer and a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, we're just experiencing a different economic offset, and that campus area has really improved.
You're talking about for that, for that address that they're offering?
Six hundred more times.
So, you're saying we're not bound to whatever the offer is?
Well, no, you can make a counteroffer. And, but I think that you have before you some very credible folks, which each one can perform. You may want to tweak this just a little bit to make it good for you and also give them the opportunity to perform.
I would also, you also have the ability to delegate the negotiations to the administration so that the board is not having to sit here and go back and forth about that and make votes. Then they can bring that back to you at a point in time. And I know that's a delay, Mr. Jackson.
You know, if this was a normal property, Justin, I'd agree with you. But this is, this is not a normal property. And just a side note, I think the board is making a very, very big mistake. They made that mistake when we got rid of Old Central High School. We're going to make the same mistake by selling this property, in my opinion.
I've looked at numbers in the past, and it's an easy twenty million dollar refurbishment project.
We're not going to go play in toilets.
No, no, I'm, have you, I've been through this school on numerous occasions. And it's, it's in incredibly bad shape. The only thing salvageable in that building are the exterior.
I don't say too much.
You can't always have it both ways, Justin. I think that is not necessarily my building, but the location, because where it's located and that it's surrounded, I think, I think that the land itself is probably more deprived in terms of the land rather than the building. And I think they probably, those that buy it are going to probably get crushed, that building up, demolish the building and start all over, and still. I think that is not necessarily my building, but the location, because where it's located and that, what's surrounding it, I believe, I think that the, the land itself is probably more, uh, deprived, which is, versus the land rather than the building, and I think they probably, those that buy it are going to probably get crushed, that building, uh, demolish the building and start all over, and still begin a good deal of what we're looking at here.
Well, let's, let's clarify, because let me just make the statement that initially when we talked about this property, I was, I was told we had twenty acres there. And I had found that sense, and when we had twenty acres there, I think I was talking about, and, and in conversation about, that being a headquarters. I found out, how many acres are actually there that we own?
Two point three.
Two point three acres. It's a very different situation from our standpoint to use, it's just not enough land for the needs that we have. So now, I think that's what, that's where the change came from.
Okay, and, and I don't know how much of a need that we would have beyond two point whatever acre, uh, acres, because we're looking at this building, and I know that we have thrown around lots of different ideas as far as what we could do to not only have it as our administrative building, but also for other school purposes, Oklahoma City Public School District purposes. And so anyway, even with two point whatever that you just said that they're there, I think it would be sufficient to put, you know, a lot of things in what I'm hearing, if we're willing to give up the property at their cost that we are, well then, you know, it's, it's not, it's, if we can't afford to, to rebuild on two point whatever that, that you gave me, we definitely would not have been able to build a headquarters or whatever we were on a twenty acre and then upkeep on that. So, that problem's keeping up with the upkeep on the building that we have, even with the schools and stuff.
Ruth, buy it twenty million dollars, that's our, some, uh, stone shelters.
Uh, any other, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there a further discussion?
Um, I'd, I'd tell you what I'm leaning towards, what Mr. Sullivan said, I mean, if we were in negotiations, we've got two candidates, four candidates, five, five, four of which are within a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, one candidate looks really good on the timeframe of forty-five days, and one candidate that looks really good at seventy-five thousand dollars. So, as Mr. Sullivan said, why can't we ask, um, this is a question, is that enough? Why can't we ask the eight hundred twenty-five thousand, ask the forty-five day due diligence that can close quick, uh, to put theirs up to nine hundred thousand to meet the other bid, or ask the nine hundred thousand to save the likewise of the others, to lower their timeframe to where we can get, I know they can't, but why can't we ask, um, my question is, why can't we counter that? I mean, I think Mr. Sullivan said we can. So if it's important enough, I mean, to me, seventy-five thousand would be, it's, it's to each other.
Well, and, and it's, I think it's dumb not, for us not to realize seventy-five thousand dollars.
And I, and I would say a balance, even if you're talking about negotiating, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Justin, but, uh, but a balance, because you're talking about forty-five days versus nine months, if, if what's given to us, you know, seventy-five dollars, nine months, we have the liability, so, you know, to, some type of a balance, some type of a medium, you know, in there, you know, since we're having to speak about it out here.
Well, and that, that also brings, uh, from my standpoint, Okura back into the mix, because theirs is, as is, they take it over and then they would be dealing with all of their, uh, which, you know, and we can, we can adjust that, uh, negotiation as well. Um, so, I guess we need to vote on whether we want to sell this, uh, under your, under Ron's, uh, motion, and then we can have another motion.
Well, before that, can we not go up with an answer, that, are we looking at like and like, I mean, is this, are we voting just for these offers, or are we not going to counter off?
Uh, we have to vote, and, and, Laura, you can help me, we have to vote on the motion that's on the table.
Unless Mr. Milliken withdraws it and the second approves that withdrawal.
If the board feels that they want to consider this more so than, than where we are now, I'd be glad to vote on our motion. But, uh, I, I feel very strongly that if we are going to sell it, we should get the top dollar for it, have no, no, uh, problem with negotiating a, a better deal, if we can do that, I'd be glad to withdraw it, if that is it.
If, if we do that, then what timeframe are we talking about? I, I would really doubt that the individuals that are here would want to sit there and negotiate this evening, so, can we put a timeframe on it, if we're not willing, maybe? If we do that, maybe it'd be a couple of days, couple of weeks, whatever it is, but let's come up with some closure and...
Because I understand this is also, this is not an individual, and I'm sure that they would have to speak to, or talk to their, you know, people as well, to see if that, you know, that that would be something that they would be able to do as well.
I think that, I believe that each individual, uh, can make a very quick decision, so any counteroffer that you would make, I would expect that we could communicate that and put a time limit, honor to, anything reasonable, three to five days.
Craig, what's the deadline for the next board meeting?
The agenda items submission deadline was actually today.
Oh.
Would it not be correct that if you made a counteroffer, once you make a counteroffer and I convey that and I accept it, you have a completed contract? So we don't have to come back.
That's true, if, if the board makes it as a counteroffer.
So, whatever that counteroffer would be, um, it either be time, it could be money, or both, and I can communicate that back.
Mr. Sullivan, would that be that we would make that counteroffer as a form of a motion in open session?
Yes, that's the only way I see that you can make that, is counteroffer.
I'm sure I would make a motion, but...
Wait, 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 we still have a motion, and, I mean, we still have a second, that Ron has agreed that he would withdraw.
And I, and I, and I did.
Okay, so you, we, all right, so Craig, Ron has withdrawn his motion, Ruth has withdrawn her second. So now, we can, um, make, suggest other proposals or counteroffers, I think.
I'm sure I'll make the motion that we accept the weak counteroffer of Renaissance JFK LLC for nine hundred thousand, with the contingents of, uh, that they, their plans to lease to Langston, and that their closing date is, uh, same as it is here, forty-five days due diligence.
James, did you not hear the billion dollars, Justin?
I always drive my money.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I wasn't kidding. I say it.
Any further discussion?
We have a motion and a second to counter the proposal to Renaissance JFK LLC for an offer of nine hundred thousand, and a, an agreement from Langston, uh, that they would be the tenant, and the due diligence of forty-five days, and a fifteen days to close, plus fifteen days to close.
Call for the question.
I think received, six, I vote for, may vote, motion carries as made.
Okay, um, seven point zero five, the proposed new policy at the Oklahoma City Public School District Wellness Policy. This is a second reading.
We have more changes, and, uh, still very, very passionate about our wellness policy, believe that this will be a good thing for our district. Something we can work on now for about a year and a half.
Okay, and seven point zero six, proposed deletion of the old policy J sixty-seven, child nutrition and physical fitness program, again, second reading.
Seven oh seven and seven oh eight are all attached to this, uh, basically what, what we're talking about is new wellness policy, and, uh, a vote at, at, probably our next board meeting, uh, for, when we have a third reading, where we would be adopting the new board policy and wellness, and, uh, deleting our old policies. Laura, have you been involved in that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, and I did have a question for Monica, I'll be here to see if I like this policy, since I've been on it for some time, and I would like to say it's a, it's a very strong policy, it's unique, and the state of Oklahoma would be the only district that's asking for a coordinated school health model, we're using recommendations from the T E C, and after each school, the completed school health index, and find out what they really need to be working on. It's a strong policy, and it also has a good component of support and accountability from the district wellness committee, so I'm really pleased with that.
Thank you. Okay, um, we need to approve the consent agenda, and that is with the eleven point three zero has been pulled from that, is that correct?
Lord, and Chair, we skipped the MAPS update.
Okay, sorry, Carrie. Terry Wolf.
Good evening, just give a real quick update to go along with the RIT's update, which is included in your board packet. Uh, briefly, some of the things that we've accomplished, uh, since our last meeting, is final acceptance of the West Nichols Hills renovation project, also the Independence Project. We approved preliminary design report for the Nichols Hills gym, and have re-designated that as possibly S seven dash two A, so it will become its own project, and a preliminary design report for the group seven gym and classrooms. Tonight, um, all of our MAPS items before you are on the consent agenda, and among those, we have the construction documents for the base two project at Classon, Classon SAS. And we have the bids for the projects, uh, gyms and classrooms in group four, five, and six, and, uh, just briefly, that is Adams, Willing, Horace Mann, Kaiser, Mark Twain, Putnam Heights, Southern Hills, Scamquayby, and Buchanan, Oak Ridge, Johnson, and Gatewood, quite a number of gyms and classrooms would be approved. Also, the construction documents for a new project at Capitol Hill High School, let me explain, is designated as S seven thirteen, that comes of the, a new request from the fire marshal, and is adding to the sprinklering that was already in our Capitol Hill High School project, of which we do not have room to add into our current budget, as in that ten percent limit for change orders. So this would be increasing or completely sprinklering that field house, including the area over the flooring floor. Be happy to take your questions.
I have, I have a concern again, as I'm looking at this, and just looking at how many change orders that we have here, and I remember having that discussion, uh, about, you know, the, the constant change orders, and, you know, why are we having so many, and that, you know, if this was all apart, why wasn't it planned better, you know, as far as this is what we're going to, to need to get this project done? Uh, I'm really concerned also as far as the, who, the overseer, and I understand that the foundation is Oklahoma City or someone that, that's the overseer of, of this particular MAPS project.
It's the city trust.
The town trust, okay, well, I'm really concerned as far as how well are we doing of, you know, how well of a job are we doing in this, when we're constantly coming to that, uh, you know, does that come to a point to where that, that it is well planned in the beginning, and that, uh, you know, I can understand some, some changes, but as the statement that was made, and, and as, you know, beginning to look at it more and more, to me, it's very poor planning on someone's part.
Ruth, is that a question?
There's a question, it's a statement, it's, uh, who's, who is the overseer?
Sorry, I'm two.
Who is the overseer of this, and why are we not doing a better job at, uh, as overseeing these particular projects?
Well, I, I'll give a, a general answer to the question of numerous change orders. Each change order typically consists of quite a few individual line items, which is, uh, part of the process that we're doing through the trust. You'll notice as you read those individual line items, there's quite a few of them that are at district request. So these are changes that we would like to see made, realizing that there are some contingency funds that could be spent, and so while the contractors there were taking advantage of that. Conversely, we have to realize that there were no as-built drawings, uh, that our designers could be providing, and so there are numerous unknown conditions being discovered as renovation takes place.
And you're saying, at the district's request, apparently, my concern is that we're not working close enough with the trust in order to make sure that we're getting what we need. I have actually sit in, been a particular meeting at Northeast about, oh, some months ago, and listening to some of the change orders, we need to move this from this place because we don't have the adequate enough equipment, it's over by leaving here, you know, and something that they can't even use, or if we move it over here, it's going to be sub-adequate and something. So to me, that states that apparently we are not working close enough as a district with the trust, or, or however the situation is, if we, you know, on all of these, you know, accounts, that we're not getting at least, you know, some of them right, because I, in the three years I have been on board, and, and I'm really pleased to, for that question to come up now, and I have begun to target in on these change orders, and to me, it is unreasonable.
Chair, I have a question for you, I think this is maybe eleven oh two, deals with the revised maintenance fund for Classon. We had a lady here tonight, she was very pointed in her comments, that, and give us a written copy of her comments, that there's a lack of, uh, educational equipment, computers, tablets, things like that, and she also pointed out that there's a lack of physical education and practice space for sports, and only one gym. Does any of that need cover by the National, whose type improvements?
The, uh, the school does have only one gymnasium, and the renovation of that is, is in part of the MAPS project, and additional spaces is not a part.
Yeah, we're, we're about practice school for sports and everything like that.
They used to have, I've invited many times to the football field there. The, uh, the prime rack fields were on the north side of the property, which, for all practical purposes, were eliminated during construction for the contractor's laydown space, and the annex is a little bit of a temporary classroom. That will be restored to the soccer field type condition that it was, but at the beginning, that's all that's in place.
Hey, is everybody, did you see Bones make that happen?
Well, in, in, in the sense of project contingency, that's why there's a second project, there wasn't, we didn't have the ability to finish, but it went out of contingency lines. In the sense of program contingency, certainly could be something that the district might ask for out of the remaining funds.
Carl, I'd hope that we would do that.
Well, I, I think the thing here is, um, we're, we're in the process of prioritizing what we're going to do with the funds that, that continue to exist, and, uh, we have, we have issues with classrooms, we have, we have an issue with the gymnasium that, that needs to get built at Chubas. We have, we have no limit to the kind of priorities that we, we've got listed for our school district. Uh, I think our situation here is, when you, when you kind of step back from this, this plan started in two thousand and one, and for the, uh, Oklahoma City School District and the MAPS Trust of the city to come out, uh, here thirteen years later, twelve years later, and we're under budget, we have some money, uh, some, some funds left over, even with the kinds of issues that we've had with, uh, with, uh, change orders, I mean, some of these change orders have been incredible, we run, you start running into a, a building that was built in nineteen twelve and, and tear into that wall, there's no way to know what's under that wall. Uh, I think, I think in hindsight, uh, this has been a, this has been a home run for, for the city and the, uh, Oklahoma City School District. Now what we have is, we have an opportunity with some funds to be able to look at some things that we want to do down the road. Uh, I think if we had really good hindsight in two thousand and one, we probably would have said, you know, we need eighty million dollars to build, uh, above-ground, uh, shelters for every school. school. I think what's going on right now is we're in the process of ending the two thousand and one bond issue and we're doing it in a pretty graceful way. Everybody seems to be competing for the four or five million dollars that's still there. But we have some real issues that need to get taken care of. South side of our school district, we have schools that are bursting at the seams. They need to have more students, we need to have more classrooms for those schools. Moon Elementary School, a school that, you know, we're trying to really encourage and keep open, we have people that would like us to spend four or five million dollars on that school. So I think what we're talking about here is this board's going to have to look at the priorities that we've got with the funds that are left over and begin to figure out what it is we want to do. But clearly, to sit here in two thousand and thirteen and criticize the planning that was done in two thousand and one, I mean, these people did a good job. They really did. I mean, you just go around our school district and I really wish we had before and after pictures of everything because it has been absolutely spectacular, what the city, Oklahoma City, the patrons of this community in the elections that they asked, what they did for us, gave us an opportunity to have a school district with good facilities. The thing with Classen SAS, that is a very small campus, you know, and there were discussions for years about, about the athletic issues there. But I really think that what we've got to be able to do is to take a look at where we're going as a school district with the next bond issue that we do. Now, I want that next bond issue to happen sooner as opposed to later. I want us to be able to have us take a look at that priority list and wherever our money ran out, that's where we start, most of the things that we, we add. But, but, I mean, clearly, protecting our students is going to be a big issue. And the state of Oklahoma, you know, I think, I think I've seen five hundred million dollars in bond issued to take care of the state, I don't think that'll do it. But, but I think for Oklahoma City, I think we really need to take a look at what our priorities are, what the money we have left over, and have a serious discussion about what it is we want to, want to fund. And then recognize that this is all about the future, this is about what we want to do next, and then stick to it. But I just, I, I am very positive about what's happened with the city, Oklahoma City, and the work that's been done in the city, it's unbelievable. No other school district has had this happen anywhere in this state.
Just for record, I was not being critical.
Yeah.
I think we all applaud the evidence to make to transform our public schools, there's no question about it. Are there issues that are made to be resolved?
Yes.
But we had a president of PTH tonight who feels like they're under attack by decisions that have been made by this board and have been a bit of paranoia perhaps, and has said, you know, why are we ignoring that? So I know, and Chairman personally, there's a person perhaps from the field has volunteered to help with the south side fields under his name.
Yes.
So, yeah, there are people out there that will help us for the soccer field. I'd say move up the cultural, make it a little bit of a priority so that these people know, this one school know, that we're not out to get them. I was taken by her comments, which I thought were somewhat unjust, by the way, that we didn't appreciate what they do as a school, that's totally incorrect. I don't know if anybody said their leaders are entitled, I certainly don't know if anybody who said they were subversive or need support there. We are very proud of the accomplishments of that school. And there are some policies that need to be adjusted, we adjusted them, I make no excuses for that.
That's true.
But I think we should address some issues that she brought to the board tonight and we'll do haste.
And one of the things that I would like to say as well, and Carl, you just mentioned about Moon, and I have brought before this board on numerous occasions, as far as Moon, I may ask the question, are we planning to keep this school open? And Carl, you have said that yes, we are. And so like, and it was taken off of the MAPS project. When we're talking about monies that we have at surplus, and we have a school that we're talking about keeping open, and I personally have sit in the school to where that while we're sitting there within the electricity is tripping because they don't have sufficient electricity in that particular building, when we're sitting in a classroom to where that we're telling the children that we want you to do the best on a test that is hot and all, when I walk into a building to where that the entry from the building all the way to the first entry to an administrative office is approximately fifty feet down the way and we're talking about the purity and all, and that none of this has been addressed in asking about that question, I was told that we were going to find monies or whatever to, to make this happen and then I'm sitting here listening to, we have surplus monies and I'm not hearing anything about this particular school as a priority, if nothing more than even the safety of these children that are in that class, that are also in a community where it's not necessarily the safest place to be. So if we want to talk about where do we spend the money, you know, even, I'm sure that they would even feel even better to know that they are in a safer place.
Absolutely, and I think this is the kind of discussion this board needs to have.
I expect that's why we're having this.
Yeah.
On eleven point twenty-one, the final insurance settlement from the twenty-ten storm, the thirteen million, just over thirteen million. How much of that has, has been spent?
I think we've obligated the majority of those funds and maybe slightly more, which is what we anticipated with deductible costs.
Okay. Could, would you, would you mind sending that to us, yeah, or to me if no one else wanted, but, and then, and then I've got a question, are we approving this Chartwell's management contract for the coming year? Or is this one of those, we do it for the back year?
It's for the future year of July first, thirteen through June thirty, fourteen. That would be the case for the Transpar, Sedexo, and Chartwell's.
So all three of these contractual companies are, this is our transportation, our food, and our heat and air, basically, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. And we are actually on consent approving those, and what are, what are the, what are the costs of those three contracts?
Refer me to those numbers real quick.
Eleven twenty-two is Chartwell's, eleven twenty-three is Transpar, and eleven twenty-four is Sedesco.
Okay, if I may take those in reverse order, please.
Okay, sure.
Eleven twenty-four, the Sedexo contract, the management services for the eight departments, that would be one point four million dollars. The eleven point twenty-three, the management of our transportation and garage services with Transpar, that's the three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, three hundred and four. And the reason why we have reverse orders to Chartwell's is not quite as easy to explain. Theirs isn't, they flat, they, they charge on a per meal order. So a lunch, they would receive-
They're paid on a per meal, okay.
They would receive nine cents for each lunch served, or for each two breakfasts served, or for each four snacks served.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we, we put all of these in on our-
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may, we were on the MAPS report and we skipped the consent agenda.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Did we, did we conclude, I take it we concluded the MAPS report and we got the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we passed the point that we pulled one item.
No, we are not.
I'll go, I'll deliver eleven twenty-four, please, for discussion.
Mr. Hammond, is that just discussion or a separate vote as well?
And a separate vote as well. Thank you.
Okay, and Craig, you know that we pulled off the agenda eleven point three zero?
Correct.
Okay. And may I give a point of clarification on eleven point two-nine, the increase with the National Academy Foundation? Eleven point two-nine.
So you're wanting discussion on that item?
Yeah, yes, please.
Is that discussion and a vote or just a discussion?
No, just discussion, I think.
So far, we have one item for discussion only, that's eleven point two-nine, and one to be pulled for a separate vote, that's eleven point two-four.
Any other? Okay, so motion to approve the consent agenda as revised?
Madam Chair, shall we first discuss the eleven point two-two four?
Two-four, yeah, that would be fine.
Don't we discuss eleven two-nine since it's not up for a separate vote and then we vote on the consent agenda and then move to eleven two-four and vote separately as requested by Mr. Hammond?
Okay, so we're going to discuss eleven point two-nine, the National Academy Foundation spending.
The request to increase spending authority for the National Academy Foundation is to allow for us to pay for registration for our staff, teachers, and academy coordinators, as well as administrators, to attend the annual conference of the National Academy Foundation.
And didn't we just authorize fifty thousand dollars or something?
We had originally requested authority for, I believe it was fifty-one thousand, back in, I want to say August or September, but that was to pay for the technical assistance that is provided by the National Academy Foundation throughout the year to our schools. And that technical assistance, they actually send staff members to Oklahoma City four times a year to provide support and monitoring to the staff, as well as assisting at the district level with ensuring that our implementation plan is solid and that we're moving in the right direction with implementation.
Okay, and, and the amount for this one?
I believe this request is for an additional ten thousand that would be needed to cover the balance of the registration for the conference.
We significantly reduced the number of people that were going to go to this, this conference by about, equivalent of about twenty-five thousand dollars. We recognize that we have issues financially, we were very careful to get with FERNA to make sure that we were a lean machine when it came to this conference.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there any other questions?
Twenty-five people, Carl, and sixty-one thousand dollars, if I read this right? I don't think that's correct. I'll give that FERNA number at least.
We are sending, we have ten open academies, and the academies that are in the first year of operation will send a team of two, which will be the academy coordinator and one of the career paying teachers. The schools that just completed the year of planning will send a team of three, and those schools will actually be graduating at the NAF conference. So we're looking at a total of twenty-six people. For registration, the cost is approximately seventeen thousand for the registration for the conference. And then, of course, we will have travel and hotel stay that will be added. So the total conference will be around fifty thousand for those twenty-six staff members. Let me just say, though, that NAF has provided us with twenty vouchers because our academies are in good standing, and those vouchers will cover the cost of travel and, this went blank, travel and hotel, one half of the hotel stay for twenty people. And so then, that has reduced our cost to about fifty thousand.
Okay, it says sixty-one thousand seven hundred right here now.
That actually? Okay, and Jane has just reminded me that the sixty-one thousand seven hundred would be the total amount of the spending authority that we used for the Nat, National Academy Foundation for this year. And that included the fifty-one thousand that was previously approved in, early in the year. And this ten thousand would bring the total to sixty-one thousand. The fifty-one is for the people that came in.
Well, I'm probably going to vote for this, but I will say, you turn on your TV set and you see the expenses by the Internal Revenue Service, and about a bad publicity that was generated, and they spend billions of dollars on taxpayers' dollars, and that's not your case. But I think we have an obligation to our taxpayers to look at these expenses and say, are these reasonable? Is this a nice little vacation? In that way, did they actually learn something? Did they learn something? How does that manifest itself in our schools? If you look at our gradations, you know, what we're getting according to the ABC plan, mostly D plan, you'd have to question the benefit of these things.
I will say that our academies this year was actually the first year that we had a large cohort of students in the academy and those were freshmen, approximately three hundred. We will be working with our PR department beginning this summer to start looking at those cohorts of students, as well as comparing them to students who are not in the academy to see if the benefits are consistent with what has been shown in research with career academies throughout the nation. So we're definitely going to be looking at the benefits to our students.
Yeah, any measures that you can provide that will support at least on, here's where we've been family.
Yes, and I will say that our first two cohorts were very small, less than forty students, because we only had the academy at one site. So really, we weren't able to use that data, data as reliable data to determine, you know, that we had results that we're looking for, but we will be looking at that.
It makes a stronger case that you can come to board and say, here's where we were, here's where we went, and here's the benefit. And I wouldn't be here for another three years asking these questions. So I like to have metrics and proof, you know, that what we're doing is working. I appreciate your attitude in making that up.
Absolutely, thank you.
Brian has done a really good job when you go to these conferences, especially with the NAF situation. You're hooked up from early in the morning till late at night, and I think it's been a positive thing for our, our school district. We're trying to cause our kids at the high school level to have some choices. And the happen of the, of the academies, we hope, moves us in that direction, but this situation here, we cut the requests down by sixty, over sixty percent.
Madam Chair, without further objection, I note that we approved the consent agenda plus eleven point two-four, which we hold for a separate vote.
A second? Any more discussion? Call for the vote.
Having received six I votes, zero A votes, motion carries as may.
Okay, and now we will discuss the Sedesco contract that has been called. Do you have a question for, for, Madam Chair?
Eleven twenty-four is Sedesco.
The one you called was eleven twenty-four, Sedesco?
I missed the one, Chartwell's, that's my bad. I thought, well, yeah, we were quite different numbers I wrote down.
Laura, what do we need to do procedurally here?
Make a question that we consider about the content of the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we-
Will that-
Adjust that. Reconsider the last vote.
Reconsider the last vote. Second.
Call for the vote. And so we will...
Having received six I votes, zero may votes, motion carries as made.
Now, somebody can make a motion to, well, you don't make a motion, you just want to ask to pull eleven point two two for Charwell's. And then you'll need to consider a motion to approve the consent agenda minus that one. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw it for discussion and vote item eleven twenty two.
Thank you.
All written paper, let's call for the vote.
Having received six I votes, zero may votes, motion carries as made.
Madam Chair, my motion would go ahead and approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second. Call for the vote. All right.
Having received six I votes, zero may votes, motion carries as made.
Thank you. All right, on eleven point two two, Charwell's.
Madam Chair, I've been unhappy with these people. They can't even do a forty five minute presentation where all they do is pat themselves on the back. And I took pains to go to Taff Junior High and have lunch one day. And the hamburger that I got, I wouldn't feed to a dog. That's how bad it was. And these people are here at the trough, some speak, asking for our business. And I'm going to tell you, the product that they put out is not after what it should be. I have run into the schools in my district, John Marshall, that made murmurs about trying to find another food vendor, while Charwell's immediately responded and sent out a chef. And for two or three weeks, that was just great. And now it's returned to what it was before. And I'm not happy with these people. I want to put them on notice that this is not going to be a contract that they're going to have forever. I encourage this board to look into other options. And we owe it to the students to make sure that what they're receiving is healthy and ample, you know, quantities, so that they can have a good breakfast and a good lunch, and hopefully down the line, maybe a good dinner. But I am not committed whatsoever, in spite of what this gentleman came, Smokey blew our way, and telling how great they were, because what I've seen firsthand was not very good. And I'm completely unhappy with this, and I know other members share my displeasure.
Is Charwell's in every school we have?
Is Charwell's what?
In every school that we have?
Yes.
I do know that I've been to some other schools, not your, not only your branch, but some others actually in Root Street. And they, I could eat it, but it looked good. But I can tell you that my son had eats at his school, and I've been up there, and it's terrible. So I agree with Bob. I think it's inconsistent where, what school it is, and I don't think we need to make our, I think if you really want to do your due diligence to go out and see every school, because they're not all the same, and some of them are terrible. So I agree with Bob. I, I don't know if, are we voting this evening to renew this contract for the following for this next year?
That's correct.
And if we do not, do we, can't, what kind of timeframe to put somebody else in there? Or to look at other systems?
I think what are the options? Who are the other providers, and what are our options?
Mr. Burkey, could you come up here, just a second, and just tell us what our options are? Thank you, Bruce.
Well, Mr. Burkey, Mr. Wolf is coming forth. Yes, I've had complaints, in particular last year, to where there wasn't enough food, you know, or either the same type of food, that I was told not enough food, period. And I have received that same complaint from, from at least two or three of my constituents, and human representatives for the constituents, for children that went to their programs after school. So that was, you know, discussed at that time as far as what they've done. You know, beyond that, I have not received a report here recently, but yet not only maybe the quality of food, but the quantity of food, to make sure that they're able to provide for all of the children in the buildings.
Yeah, my comment goes along with what Bob said. I agree. If we're going to go to healthy food, that's fine. But it doesn't take as much, and we're going to eliminate sugar and carbohydrates, which carries students through the day. If you're going to replace that with tomatoes and lettuce, there should be enough tomatoes and lettuce to carry you through the day, and they're not. I have to send food with my, I mean, one boy, six one, one's five eleven, and they're not size two boys, they're hungry much. And so the little four sheets that are just about the big as your hand, not going to carry those two jokers through the day, okay? It's not going to happen. So if we're going to cut back on carbohydrates and sugar, then what are we going to replace it with? Jay would add, listen, one comment I left off a while ago. Madam Chair, we did it to you last week, and I was surprised to learn that of the students that receive one hundred percent free lunch and free breakfast, what percentage of those students don't eat free lunch and free breakfast? It's like sixty percent. Sixty percent that do, forty percent that don't. So forty percent of kids that have the option to walk up and get a free meal, don't, there's got to be a reason. And I think it's what the reason is.
And that's, and I'm being told that the food is not adequate, does not fit the needs, and so we have a lot of plates. That is one of the things that we loaded on last year, as far as the large amount of money that we paid for that, and how much of that is going to wait in the majority.
Mr. Burkey?
Yes, Julie, it's only, the problem, Jay, that has come up is that the USDA has changed regulations, and so there are some things that we can't control within the district, and that's how many calories we serve, and how those calories are broken down, so that no management company can control that. They have to follow USDA guidelines. So that's not really, certainly up for debate.
But I, and before we get to Mr. Burkey and Mr. Wolf, I agree one hundred percent with what Jay says. You have to have enough food, and I agree with what you say, we have to have healthy food. But you guys missed the points that Ms. Bill was making, that you can do this, but you can do it also with better food. That is accustomed to us. And whenever I go pick up my son, and he's, and he's got an avocado in his hand that is not cut, not peeled with the core and the spin around it, I'm sitting there looking at myself saying, what did you get a project to bring under your mom to mix with what mole is eating? And he said, no, that's my vegetable for the day. I'm like, what kind of kid? And then another example is raw cabbage. For a lot of these foods that are raw, I think in preparation, you want the same food, but in preparation, there may be a different material in there. Those are some things that are kind of odd. Mr. Burkey?
This is the final year of the five-year cycle on the contract.
But I know these contracts are year to year.
They're year to year. If we terminate the contract, if you decide to terminate the contract, then we're at a point where without food service, we would have to issue another RFP, get that responded to, and select another vendor. And the timeframe on it would not be conducive. So we would have to have Charwell's if they agree to transitions until we could select another food vendor.
So do we automatically assume that we are going to have to force a renewal contract? Because then there hasn't been any preparation just in case? Do our conversations, are, what do we do if it doesn't?
We are required, Ruth, it's a fifth year, which we're coming up, and next year we'll complete the fifth year to issue a brand new RFP. Okay? Up to that point, it becomes a renewal process.
I think at this point, that there seems to be enough dissatisfaction on this board. Can we take a serious look at another vendor?
Can I tell the board, this process of issuing RFPs for food service management company is governed by the USDA and the State Department of Education's Child Nutrition Services. I was in a board meeting on Monday night at another district, the RFP itself was eighty one pages. It is rather lengthy. The process and the scoring that is required to be done, I don't believe you can do this, as Mr. Burkey is saying, by the time school starts. You can't make the transition, given that timeframe. It's a process that starts in about January, in order to go into effect in January.
And again, that's why this is set up on the five-year cycle, and it gives us enough leap time. We will have the new RFP, correct me if I'm wrong, Lord, that the State Department of USDA will issue in July one, and then we construct a ten-foot off that. January one, excuse me, and then we construct a ten-foot off that.
Okay, Jim, and I'm just trying to clarify from my own understanding. Although these are renewable each year, you're saying they're basically a five-year contract? The RFP goes out for a five-year contract?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it is renewed by USDA on that particular cycle along with the State Department.
Okay.
And that RFP and the responses that come in on this, also have to be approved by the State Department also.
Okay.
In other words, we check off and say, hey, everything looks great. It has to pass muster, and it has to go through the checkoff policy as far as the State Department is concerned also.
Okay, so...
Any other vendor, sorry, sorry.
Let me just, let me just get through my, my question. So if we are under this...
We're going to be issuing another RFP in January during year end.
In January. And then, and then how many different vendors actually qualify? You say that these have to be approved vendors, right? Do we know how many qualify, how many other vendors there are?
We advertise and submit to all vendors that are known to us.
How many are known to you?
The qualification Mr. Burkey was mentioning is, the board's final decision isn't final until the State Department has rendered its verdict on the decision.
Okay. And how many choices do we have, approximately?
If I remember correctly, I believe we sent out four or five vendors last time and received two proposals.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Harding, the other day, there were only three, four UConn public schools. That was Charwell's, Sedesco, and another group called Southwest something, and I can't remember. They only has two schools in the state.
And we can...
There are not very many companies that do this.
We can beat the bushes and look to see, and see if there are more companies there that we can send proposals out to, that, that the big three, basically, are the ones that they just described here. Probably they, they probably do about ninety percent of the business of all the schools in the state.
I may ask you a question. So we signed this contract. What have we made attention upon is the individual principal or the CAV, or PTSA or something, PTA or somebody, could decide that they wanted to go with another vendor on their own. I know Harding has a provider that's different than Charwell's. I think Aztec School does too. So is it possible that we could allow these schools to experiment through this oncoming year with a vendor of their choice? And if we go back to Charwell's, I guess it doesn't work.
Sir, I don't believe that we can do that. The issue is that our food service program, basically, is one, one entity as a school district, we do business at the Oklahoma City Public Schools. Now, the reason that those charter schools can do business on their own is they're their own educational agency. We develop one contract, we, we build the US Department of Education through the state, we get reimbursed. We, and a couple of the charter schools that are in this, charter schools also participate with us. I think that what we need to do with this board is we need to take a look at this issue, not let it, not let it die, work with Sedesco at the beginning of the school year, tell them, excuse me, with Charwell's beginning of the school year, you know, I'm sure that they're going to know that they're, that we have great issues with them. But then to really get out there, write a new RFP, and there will be other issues we'll be doing RFPs for too, and really...
Well, we'll be required to write a new, have an RFP issued at the conclusion of next academic year. We would have the guidelines in January, the new guidelines, any changes on it, and at that point in time, we would pursue the actual construction of the RFP.
I think this is...
Which is a pretty monumental transition, I mean, even with more of the airtime frame carrying, getting it out and selecting a vendor on the state department.
Our goal is, the document doesn't become available to us through the State Department until January. Our goal should be to have it identified by May first, so that we can have a lengthy transition period, allowing them to see our schools in operation, as well as the summer preparation period.
Can I ask you a question? This falls under UOL's department. And if you know that this is going to be coming in January, and why can't, kind of like for me in business, if I know that a position's going to be vacant in January, I would start my energy and process now. So how come you can't start the...
Because the new guidelines have not been issued by the State Department, yeah.
The US Department of Education controls that. They send this down to...
Control you from going to try new experiences?
They have a very specific process for hiring a food service management company, which is what a Sedesco and a Charwell's are for a district. They are very specific. They provide those guidelines to the State Department, and the State Department then issues that RFP, and you have to use their RFP.
I think that's a great idea. They should just have to eat the same school restaurants as we do.
That's, Jason explained the same thing that I have asked here, and in my comments and all, and so, you know, it's almost like your hands are tied, and it's almost like you're...
No, I think the people, I think, I think you guys are missing my point, because we went to a board meet, a National School Board Association meeting, and I know that those programs out there, they have great big booths, they were the biggest booths out there set up, and then they're out. You can do your due diligence between now and January, that's my point, without a guideline of an RFP, whatever, to go sign. You can do your due diligence, correct?
Justin, I think what you're talking about is doing our homework.
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe getting some input from...
Principals, to ask the principals.
...that we, I don't even know, we're restricted to this district. We can, we can start making those calls and doing our due diligence. But as far as the year's getting in motion, January would be when we receive the information that we need to construct the RFP. And as Mr. Wolf had indicated, then we go through that process, and we would be bringing the contract in May, and that's going to give us more than adequate time. If a vendor is selected to transition from old to new, then it would be in a very seamless way.
That's exactly what I'm saying, thank you, thank you very much.
We could do that.
How would I recommend to visit principals and schoolteachers that are out there to get in their information? All I've got are elementary school, and they're a whole lot different than high schools, they're not the same.
To me, I think it would be, obviously, if there are customers, there are students, et cetera. I, I think we need to get a bit of a global view as far as other districts comparable to our size also. I think that would add to the mix. But I agree with you a hundred percent. We can do our due diligence in January, we can start the process on it, and hopefully, whatever we need to do, we'll be ready to go with it in May, with the approval of the State Department, of course.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Burkey. Given the information we just have received, I'm going to make a motion that we accept this contract for, through the end of this year, or through this contract basis, and then do our due diligence coming up. I'm hearing that we really don't have time, and we put our schools in jeopardy and the food in jeopardy if we don't have a food service voted on. So I will make that motion.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Having received six I votes, zero may votes, motion carries as made.
Is there any new business? No new business, okay. And... And we will have a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Bruce, is there a second? Thank you. Second by Laura, and call for the vote.
Having received seven I-votes, zero N-votes, motion carries as made.
Yeah, I know, he sent me the picture, he's like, yeah, I see you, I see, I see you, and I'm like, wow. And then he's like, oh, and it's a city of mine showing up, and I'm like, yeah, I passed. And I'm like, oh, are you talking about my kids, I mean it? He's like, yeah. Yeah, that's very good. Good, good. Oh, really? Yeah, 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 I just had with my siblings, yeah. It was a good time. I, I know I didn't, but I think I ran like maybe halfway, but I was running with my older sister, she's a little bit bigger, so I think I did a little, halfway. Yeah, kinda like a car wash thing where it just craves it down, yeah. Yeah, you really, like, if you really wanna get all colored up, you'd have to target card, you know, you'd get close to the people that are screaming, that's what I do. And where you, when you can't breathe, did you go through the, at the finish line, like, uh, I thought I was gonna... Your shirt's white. I didn't know if you guys were school together or... Yeah. That's so true. That's very true. Oh, really? Very common. Oh, dude. Oh, you are? They're hiring nine people, so I think it'll fill. Anyway, it was like...
How long have you been there?
It'll be recorded, right? So if I wanted to see recording?
I think so.
Cause I, my battery...
I told you, I've like never done it before, so we'll see.
Watch him.
Who was it that took you two hours? Oh, what?
You know, pop boy, it'll make you mad.
I know.
I know, just like you.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I play there.
I know. I tell my girls, I'm like, ain't nobody for that.
Did you tell Bo to stay home this week?
He's in Austin at a month-long school. He's gonna get promoted here soon, I betcha. So there's a couple of schools, they send all the, you know, if you're gonna move up, you end up going, and he's going to Boston. So might not be within a year or two, but they're currently... I've been on thirty-one, he's been on twenty-seven, but he's slightly more successful behind him, apparently. And he'll be on part for thirty-five or so, so he's got plenty of time to move on up to his Boston net, and I wish I knew what the name of the school was, the initials are Real Call Purr School, and there's probably a better title than the Purr School. But he's a Purr school. I even asked him, what do I really call it? It's the, it's the Purr School. I'll tell everybody you're off for thirty days, or anything, so I get to do this weekend. It was kind of old homewake, don't I remember five years ago them complaining about the Sedexo, pizza and hamburgers, something new. Chartwell. So now we're gonna go darn Chartwell, we want something new, the Sedexo.
It's all, it's all a racket.
I, I really, yeah, and like I said, I think it's all from the federal government, they're all playing the same rules, the same, only so many ways to make a pizza. Yeah, yeah, it's worse, yeah. Definitely, we get back to Sedexo, and we get back to Chartwell's. And like I had been on one of the Chartwell's presentations on YouTube, I was kinda impressed, they were talking about how much food they give, they're no money at all. I mean, they're making these meals for forty cents, I remember they said, one was a forty cent. And yet for that, we're just, got some pretty basic hamburger meat for the burger, and pretty ba, I mean...
Those are prices like that, you expect a bad burger.
Cause it was, I wanna say, cause I wanna say, I remember the, the actual number, forty one cents a meal, and that includes the tacos and everything. So it's kinda one, have it both ways, I wanna spend almost no money on this stuff, but I'd like a good party.
You know, to me, if you're cooking, there's no way you can have a bad burger. You know, it's just meat laddies or whatever. You know, now that they put the masala, if they put seasoning, that's the reason.
I don't know. But yeah, there's, I don't, I can understand frustration, I can't re-decide, can't re-pick, again, yeah, you can't. And I think partly, and I think I wanna stop waiting, isn't, again, this is all the discussions, a lot of this is federally subsidized and all that. If Washington's gonna send you the money to buy a school bus, they're probably gonna tell you what type of school bus to buy, and you're, you wanna go buy your own? Go for it. Yeah, that's the thing, I bet if they said, you know, if we're gonna hire on people and not use federal money for it, yeah, knock this off, I have pizza, I have to deliver all your food, but if you want federal money, I bet. Though I can certainly, since I have heard that all over the place, that they're all, it's such veggie sort of great, good food, which I probably don't eat at all, but, and I'll admit that, what always told my diet, so if I eat a good meal, and I eat a great meal, it's good stuff, and an hour later, I'm...
I wanna know the students, I wanna know the students talking about where they were giving avocado.
Avocado. How do I open this again? What do I do with this? A mushroom, or that, like apples, or this thing? You got a hammer, I can open this with? It was pretty good there, you know? Yeah.
Are you all gonna open this for me?
Do I peel it, something like around, like an apple, is it a banana thing? Yeah, cause I can, I probably didn't learn any of that, avocado, it's like thirty years old, I probably, somebody told me to have, I was in high school even, I wouldn't know what to do with this. I know guacamole, and I see this, but I'm not sure how two things work there. Yeah, especially a fifth grader here, I don't know. Give you a banana, I expect you know how to use that, and an apple, okay. But you give me a guava fruit, or plantain, or an avocado, and I'm gonna start...
So that's a, that's a vegetable or wood?
Yeah, he said the guacamole, avocado was the vegetable that day. Instead of getting green beans, you got... Here, you've had your veggie. Well, I've got it. I've eaten it, I'm like, I'll eat it. Yeah, that's gonna be something, here's your coconut, that's your food of the day. Okay. This is to go, yeah. This is to go. Gonna eat it here, take it home. I can wait till I get a sauce someplace. And actually, now that I think about it, you know the danger of giving a bunch of fifth grad's avocado? It'd be a wonderful little food fight going on. I know, I'm not gonna eat this. Yeah, I get beaned by four avocados and we're out of the... So yeah, I...
Oh, yeah, it's like, here it is, and throw it out, here it is, and throw it out.
And I, so I understand the report and all that, but it's, you're not driving a little big boat, there are five guys on an aircraft carrier, a whaler, trying to slowly budget for it, and you don't have control over them. Just thinking, yeah, there's probably not much they can do about food contracts or food quality, as long as they pay all that federal money, which you probably have to do, fund all the money today, and so, again, once you did that, that aircraft carrier's going in that direction, and I can't handle that. And that probably is that test of a really good board member, the ones who realize is, you know, this is not even where I keep, we're never gonna do this, but this is just gonna go. But I can affect how we're rebuilding our gyms, if I want a better floor, you know, for whatever the little things are or something, you know? Yeah, I was thinking, at first I was thinking about the chain doors, but I could, if you don't even have original plans, and you're gonna tear down a hundred-year-old building, about, how much is a little wall going to cost? Well, I'll tell you as soon as I hit it with a hammer, but until then, I don't know. In fact, we're doing that right now, my water line in my house is busted, and I'm in, my house was built nineteen oh three, and so I made it even a hundred ten years. And the dug the water pipe up, no real surprises there, but I gotta rebuild the sidewalk, it was underneath the concrete like walkway or whatever. Yeah, no, it's me to do it, because it's on my side of meter, yeah, and in board from the meter, so I have to do it. So three thousand bucks to trench and dig up the water line, but even then, he was trying to bid on, you know, well, I gotta tear up the sidewalk here, I hate to say, because it wasn't the ceiling sidewalk, it was like the house. I've got concrete, walkway all the way around the house, and it went under there, through that. Well, I don't, you didn't have one sidewalk, I had four sidewalks. And every time it retract, they would just pour another sidewalk on it. And like, not one, but number two, had wire heading in it, so he takes this thing out, punts it? Yeah, well, the first one goes, and he's like, oh, no, no, there, punts out, that goes, that's another one. And it was, and also, he did get some of it, and it's all the water. Oh, God. So, then he has to go get a bigger crack, backhoe, get that, and go, all right, I didn't know it. And I think he had no plan, he didn't know where it was, or what it was.
Did you give you a change order?
Well, and well, and that's the thing, somebody else had said they could do it for twenty-five, something twenty-seven, he said thirty-four hundred dollars, but that'll be it. I will get it in there, if I can do it in five minutes, I'm making a bunch of money, if it takes me two weeks, I'm losing a bunch of money. Instead of a one-day trip, it was like a two-day trip, and had to come back out later and fix it again, so I, I think he was smart, he knew that I'm gonna have to build him a fair amount. And I don't know if he made much money off of me, because they were up there. His boss is there, he had his working guy with him, his boss there, saying, yeah, we can tear this out, about, how many days can't we? You see, the working guy, he's going, uh, well, it might be about two days, boss. You mean during the day, you guys, you can bring Chuck and do it in the day. Poor guy. He stopped. And so, he and Chuck were there for a couple of days with a bigger backhoe hanging. The boss going, oh, yeah, you don't, you can hit this, it'll be great. You know, what does weed can do it, boss, you ain't really... And then we get the sidewalk report.
There's one about twenty, about twenty, yeah, about twenty-two or twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I think I need to have it done, but in my backyard, the cheapest one that I got was like twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah, well, cause they really do, they're gonna count it with the backhoe, they dig the trench, they get either, now, they never had to find the old one, they were just gonna put a new one in, so that was nice, they didn't worry about the old one. But the new one, and then when they were in the house, they had to tie it to the house thing. And then it was in the middle of all the rain, and that started to happen. But now, they're gonna get the sidewalk report, well, that's twenty-five hundred dollars, get the sidewalk report. And again, the same thing, they're having to, part of the sidewalk wasn't pouring up, so they were gonna, so they told me how much it was, and I even had to dress up so I'd get a higher price. They bid too low, cause the thing is, they, the water people didn't have to tear up the whole sidewalk, just a backhoe, but... So, I hear him saying the same thing, oh, yeah, the report, we'll dig up this stuff, so I'll match. That'll be easy, I have to say, you know, it ain't easy, there's four layers there, and one of them's got wire. Says, no, it doesn't, you can't, no, so dig down it. Oh, my gosh, and that was half broke up, if you can kinda get to it with a shovel. So, yeah, it's gonna take a while, and yeah, it is, so I don't want you to give me this great bid, I pay it. And ten minutes into this, you realize we gotta stop, because, you know, I don't know what, I mean, I guess you could hold them to it, to make them, but... I said, no, so it ended up, he says, how about three thousand dollars, and he finally did the whole math. So, about twenty-seven, so thirty-four hundred to get the water line in, another three thou- off, one broken water pipe, five, two thousand bucks. But I'll have brand-new water pipe, and I'll have brand-new sidewalk, walkway. And right now, right now, it's just a trench, so they pulled the dirt back in. Oh, and then O and G called up, cause they knew we were to, says, you know, our line, you put our line in there nineteen forty-five, and it runs kind of beside the water pipe, cause the water guys are voiding it. Said, um, can you leave that for a while, so we can get in and replace our water pipe?
Yeah, you paid me.
Well, that's what I, they're gonna come out tomorrow to look at, see if they need to, and they say, yeah, it's about time to do it. They say, push them to shove, we just come in and say, we're very sorry, we would, at our cost, dig up your sidewalk, and report your sidewalk, and do the whole thing ourselves, cause you've already dug it up. And I don't wanna be a jerk, and say, no, I'm pouring it next Monday, and good luck, you paid me to do it up here. Yeah, that's the thing, it's all the same sidewalks, so... And actually, when I talked to the concrete guy, he said, well, you know, if you let them, if he pauses, don't pour the concrete, and let them dig up, so they might put it back, pack it well. It might save me some trouble when I finally make the sidewalk, so... Can I get a minute where the plumber did it, it's almost smoother than it was before. And if O G, and O and G would use a tighter length, cause they're gonna go all the way back, so... Might have O and G, and I did replace their seventy-year-old gas line. I mean, I might as well, but yes, it's, ends with all the rain, it's just been a mess, and it's muddy out there.
I just think if, uh, if O G and E would've came out there prior to...
Yeah.
They could've said, sir, you gotta bust this line here after we dug this up, and you, oh, I do.
All been on them, that's the thing, if O and G would've done it first, they would've paid for everything and put it all back together. But unfortunately, their, like, gas line is still working. My water line is not. It's like the sewer line, same thing, if the sewer line were busted, the city would've done the sewer line, but now, it was my water, and it really was the water feed line. Cause like, my water pressure doubled when it took the old one in, and that old one was just awful. But I would really hope, when I'm gonna, when I get thirty-one years on, I'm gonna create a thirty-five, so I would really hope that the next owner, is four years when I sold it, would do this.
And I just get the, the camera to go in, in the sewer line.
Really?
See if I don't, just I think one guy will be, like, down the line, maybe past a hundred and fifty feet, that it may be crumbled.
Oh, really?
So, uh, if they wanna charge like three hundred dollars, it's one of those...
Run the little camera in there? Wow. But is it, is it starting to back up or something, or is it...
Sometimes it do, and they come in and, and talk, and it looks like within two weeks, it may do it again, and then sometime, like two years.
You're right, yeah.
Either, either some, uh, sometimes weeds or some roots are growing in there, and it's crumbled or something. And they said, well, we can put a camera in there and see, but I did go there, you're looking at about twenty-four.
Yeah, also, it costs to dig a trench, and, and I thought they'd like dug little small trenches, now they do the whole backhoe, they want like a foot, so they do all the back. And plus, mine was hard too, cause it's, like, here's my house, and here is the fence, I mean, hey, we already had the ten minute warranty. So, yeah, I think, you know, open field, they target twenty-two thousand bucks at least, if there's any compensation, they want more than that, and again, I can't complain on that. And on the concrete, I thought twenty-five hundred was expensive. I talked to a friend of mine, or a cop who does concrete work, and he says, you know, the price of concrete, for whatever reason, these past couple of years, it is very expensive. Yeah, that's only priced at like, I think it's a twenty-seven hundred dollars. So, they're spending two thousand on concrete, they're only gonna make four hundred bucks after they're all done. And that's, and they gotta do by wheelbarrow, cause I'm too far away from the house, street. I'm right beside my house, the street's fifty feet away, so they got a wheelbarrow in, and they said, that's a pain. The other side's drive-right, cause it's packed up, besides, except for the reason why, I would've given mine, it's just, although it's all open. And again, I just wish the next owner would've done this. And I think there's gonna be another surprise when we're all done, I've wondered about this too, but, so they dug up part of the sidewalk, just stole the rest from them, have the whole thing, but, cause the old water line went there, and went into the house. And all, the only reason I knew, I heard the water running one night, and I checked all the faucets, toilets aren't running, gone to the basement, and there was water pouring into the wall, the line was busted out there. And there's also a lot of dirt on the floor, it's washed dirt inside, and now, when I walk down that sidewalk, you can almost bounce up, I think it'd be a little, little sinkhole or something. I think when they, I wonder, I think when you dig the sidewalk, you're gonna have like a two-foot deep hole underneath it, so you're gonna have to fill the dirt.
Two-story house.
Three-story, and a basement. So... Nineteen oh seven, three-story house, it's been nice, but it's awful. And that's one reason why you're gonna go for the higher bid, because anything, anything goes, uh, things go wrong, like even with the foundation, the bricks. Or, you know, they're, it's a hundred and ten years old now, so that brick, there's almost no mortar left or anything. So, I told them, um, you know, just gotta go in, go through the bricks, and then up to go through the basement to get the water in. So, and they said, you're kinda cute, and said, well, the good news is, I can poke through those bricks, and go dig the whole trench up to it, and poke through it. Bad news, I can punch the bricks real easy, I mean, that's the good news, it's also, if we're not real careful, I'm gonna push the whole foundation, I mean, you know, I'm gonna have a foot or two of bricks just crumble. I said, but if I ever got into the side hole, and they did, they put a piece of plywood on the inside, braced it, and on the outside, you have to drill and drill through there. Even then, he said, he saw a lot of mortars coming down, and those bricks were wanting to go in. He says, what you're really doing, you know, you lift your house up, and you take all the bricks out, and you put them back in, and re-mortar them, and lift the house back down, and going, no.
Cost of another house.
That's the thing, yeah, yeah. So, that's why, again, I hate the guy that was getting more pressure off, cause I said, yeah, cause somebody, oh, I can do it two thousand bucks, I'll just knock the wall in. And that's the thing, I said, so even if you knock the wall in, so you, I'll, I'll make the wall good, if I hit another pipe, I'll make it good.
Your house may lean.
Well, and see, that's, and you can tell, that's, the house is sagging over the years, cause about every five years, all the doors start sticking again, and, cause everything's tilted just a little bit. Oh, and even that, so, yeah, my door started sticking, every, my front door. So, I just bought a new key set, lock set, and all that, and so, it doesn't fit the old door, so this is, and I even measured the door, they're come a standard size. This one's not even, they're usually thirty-six by eighty. Well, my door is thirty-four, no, thirty-seven, it's wide by eighty-three inches tall, so I called Lowe's, and they go, we don't make doors like that, that's a custom door. So, I've got a door company coming out Monday, who's gonna build me a custom door, just like, and I explained with the earlier, I said, yeah, we'll actually make them kinda, I mean, you won't be able to tell, but it's, it's gonna be a door that looks like this, that'll fit your little door frame, so... Everything in that house is four times north, and, and everything, you know, you break the one thing, and it breaks the next thing, it breaks the next thing, so... That's why I paid a slightly higher bid, and just get it done right. And again, you hire the cheap guy, and you bust something, and you can't really, oh, you have to fix it, you're gonna have ten thousand dollars to fix my foundation, maybe the bigger guy does. But I was really hoping to leave all this to the bigger people.
Well, they could bring somebody in to inspect, even if you did, so, I don't know.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's the thing, I'd either pay an hour, or I would get the price knocked off the next one. And that's what I think, is before, they walked up, even though nothing was busted, they'd look at that sidewalk, and they'd know, I'm gonna replace this someday, aren't I? Well, now, it's already been replaced, so that's one thing. But just to make it even work, because of doing all that, I've got three dogs, they have a doggy door, they come and go all day long, and they don't worry, they... Well, with all this, they'd have to take out the fence, so that's where they're gonna, so the fence is perched back up there, the dogs could walk right through it, unlocking them in, you know, it used to be locked, all their lives, they'd come and go anytime, they're used to holding it in. So, just to make it really exciting, today, I just go home, open the door. They had a hundred bucks in the house, but it was five twenty, I thought. Don't walk in that, sorry. I'm waiting to go home, be getting my coopers from the inside. They do, yeah, yeah, cause like, if they go in the yard, they could just wander straight out, so I locked it, and it's been, they, only two days. But I almost can't blame them, but I really do, the whole time I'm sitting down, I'm going, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna have to...
You're going out at this time.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can't blame them. But, yeah, I don't, and if I would've had these, I would've cleaned it up right there, I'd have been, oh, yeah. I even talked to the wife, said, you don't believe what the dogs did inside.
Oh, that's gross, that's horrible, you cleaned up?
No. Are you leaving it? To get the water? Sorry. Yeah, exactly. So, you have a doggy scooper, don't you, you have for the backyard, well, take it in the kitchen and use it in there, okay, but the house kinda smells, and, oh. If I just could get home even like twenty minutes earlier, I would've just, but I mean, I was walking this long enough to feed them, lift them out, scare it down, and then walk them back in, and down there. And that's when it was a little bit late. So, no, I'm not before a person, you know, the dog, he feeds them, but I am tonight, apparently, all cause of this deep water. Well, and then, O G, and he calls up, and said, do you mind if she did look in on you a little bit? Well, I mean... You gonna come with the cooper-scooper every night, do this? Well, that's the thing, so I feel silly about it, cause I understand, O G wants to do it. Well, that's what my wife would just ask, you know, the dogs secure, I said, no, they're not, she said, good, temporary fence, I go, well, and I'll know in a day or two, cause O and G says, no, we're not gonna do it. I said, my concrete guys are ready to do the sidewalk next week, so I'll just wait till then, they'll do it, we'll keep the house once, twice more, maybe push it down, and then it'll be done. But if O and G asks for a month, to come and do it, then, yeah, I bet we can be able to, I can just do some more temporarily now. But, yeah, they're just not used to it, and their, their wife, which I think, I don't know if that's, well, it's quite better, using the cleanup, I guess, but... Walks in the house, and go, you guys go to the, you did, and over there, and over, my wife's gonna kill me. And it's all hardwood floors, and they're crummy, they're not nice, like they're crummy old hardwood floors, so, it won't affect anything, but I'll know, see that little stain over there? The water stain? Kind of a water stain. Yeah, it's from the water, yeah, that stain is from where the water line broke. Really? Yeah, long story, the water line broke, lost the fence, locked the dogs in, dog food back. But when I retire, we built a nice house out in eastern Oklahoma, where my wife's from, she has students, and it's gorgeous, it's nice, and it's perfect, so I'm so looking forward to retiring. Solving my house with some sucker, who wants a hundred-year-old house, downtown from the city. It is gorgeous, it's very pretty, and it's right downtown, right up the street here, it's lovely, but... It's also giving some, some couple that has too much money and wants to refab a little house. Yeah, it's great location, it's area, it's everywhere, everyone loves it. And I noticed, there's, right now, there's very time, for those, turn our blocks and block over, there are two different foundations, there are places, both in there, that's what you gotta do, eventually, you just have, you really do have to lift, uh, lift it up, brace it up. Take that wall out, put it back up, move to another section, take it up, and I, we've just never done that, somebody's just gonna have to do it someday, but not me, I hope. So, again, if that just falls in, then I'll have to do that then. Yeah, I don't, I was wondering, gonna walk, wanna down there and ask them how much the payment is, and how expensive they're doing it. Cause we already have one wall done, we bought, one wall had fallen, and we bought it. It's a three-story basement, it's courtesy, it was bought for twelve thousand dollars, because the wall had fallen, and all the pipes were gone, and it was horrible site, so it was a good deal. But we kinda made up by putting all the money back in. We should've had all the walls done at the same time, but we didn't. Just fixed the wall, and we... No, this is the one I've got right here, yeah, the new ones, it's the last house built, mother-in-law gave us the land, and, yeah, we built a nice house, got it, we got the other one finished in December. And it's lovely, so as soon as I retire... But how can I give this up? I have a plan, I have a school board. Well, I have thirty-one years in August, so if I can do four more, I'm gonna be happy, if that house will last for four more years.
It'll be cheaper, let's just say you did retire.
Yeah.
I'm sure you still have to carry some type of license or something.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Like, it'll be cheaper, uh, I mean, you might not like it, but it'll be cheaper to bring you in after you retire.
Oh, yep.
Rather than bringing somebody who's active.
Yep, well, they do, like, the unit right down the hall, I mean, recruiting, all the recruiters, they look like police officers, actually, all retired police officers, recruiting that way, um, sex offender registration for some reason, where all the sex offenders have to register down the hall. They're all retarded guys, only given, cause they still make good money, but they only pay them three days a week, which is kinda what they want. So, there's two sets of them, I think, on Wednesdays they switch, but they said it works out great, they're a five-day week, you have a three-day week. And I just register sex offenders all day long, I don't know if they even bother, they go, they're all plain clothes. And, yeah, I could see something like that. I'll keep doing this as long as I can.
Boy, they thought of that, uh, okay, let's just say that did happen.
Yep.
You did have to make the order, you'll be a citizen, consider you a citizen?
No, you actually, to keep, like you say, the license, if you keep your license, you're still a full police officer. You're not, you're not a twenty-four-hour police officer, but as soon as you do a police action, you're reactivated at that moment. Cause like, the other day, we had a retired guy that, um, uh, he was at his kid's graduation, grew up in the close, it was a cop center, and a guy fell down, like he's having a heart attack. So, the retired guy runs over, grabs it, you know, do you have one of those electronic E O D? Yes, I ran over there, got that, ran back, and he actually could put in a paste dub for three hours, because he became a police officer again for three hours while they get the staff, and, or, I think he went to the hospital with the guy and all that. So, yeah, as long as you're doing a police, and that was one of the more medical and policey, but they called, yeah, that's, please. So, yeah, if I keep my license, if I ever do anything, I'm back on the books again, so...
Is that not a good thing, if you retire, so, I guess not, if you don't make over a certain amount of money, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I get a minute, since we're moving out east of Oklahoma, I don't know if there's a law enforcement out there, so I'm just gonna let my wife, wife support me, and she's younger than I am by ten years, so... Support me, and, like I said, there's farmhouse, plywood chickens, or something. Oh, we got a hot tub, I think we got an acre, so we got farm stuff going on, it's wonderful. We got farms, we have fishing, and I come back here, and I go out there every weekend, cause my wife already moved, she went ahead and moved out, right now, it's mu- her mother's land, and she always needs to move back to take care of mom, mom's hard to, need help. So, I said, okay, you can move out there, build the house, and I'll be there as quick as I can, and you can do this for like another two, four years. So, I go out there every weekend. Yes, that's why it wasn't so bad, I said, you won't believe what the dogs did, and I told her, well, I'm glad I'm not living there. I told her, well, I'm glad I'm not living there, I know, it's, it's far. Don't come visiting anytime soon, let me get the smells out, yeah. Well, they, oh, even them, I load them up, take them out, because we got a big backyard, they go playing around, it's two-acre backyard, wonderful, and then, come Sunday nights, it's, tomorrow, guys, back to the city, you know, look, man, you know, it's, they got a little yard, very, very.
Dog door.
I'll imagine. It's boring, you just go to work all day, you sit there all day, and I bear their bark at the deer, and bark at everything, the good guys. Yeah, no, it's a good deal, I just have to be patient, probably. And every time I talk to one of my Wednesday friends, I say, really, your family, your wife lives out there, and you don't get to see her, that's so sad, and I know, it's just kind of lonely and all that, I talk to my guy friends, I go, what is it? You don't live with each other? It's, you only share weekends. It's like Tuesday night, you do whatever you want. Ever check, don't ever, how are you gonna rent your feed? Go out there, spend the weekend, that's fine, but then.
Pouring over your house.
Yeah. And I gotta be, it is kind of different on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday night when I'm out there, because on a Thursday night, like, tonight, when I go home, I'll step to two o'clock more, watch TV, whatever. I go out there, it's kind of different, because, you know, we watch TV, then we go to bed, and it's, but I'm like, okay, my video games are all right. No. I do it at my house, can I do that here? No. So, I'm not, like, we sit down for dinner, and I don't wanna sit down for dinner, I wanna eat KFC.
I wanna eat in front of the TV.
Do I have to put clothes on for dinner? I don't really want to. It's my shorts, that didn't have those shirts, and sit on the, on the couch and eat KFC.
No, I'll cook you some chicken. Who's coming over tonight?
We're gonna go see my mom tonight. Really, I'd rather just order a pizza and sit on the sofa like I do every other night in the world, and, so, kept like, tonight. Yeah, it'll be an investment, when I finally do retire, I'll just, I'll.
How many years has it been since you?
One year.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, it's been one year, and we, we're doing okay, and again, if I just knock it out another year, or two, or three, it'll be okay. So, and it does work, it's, it's just, we just got the house finished in December, so it's sort of, now all the grass is coming up, we're all pretty now, we're trying to get some anti-impacts, it's, I mean. It's hard some Sunday nights, but, in fact, I've been calling to see if on all Mondays, I should have just. Come back, or I'll, just for a couple of hours, I'll stay out there Monday, about lunchtime, I head back to the town.
Does she, does she get out there and cut the yard, or do you have somebody coming in?
We have somebody, yeah, either I do it, or, yeah, she's not much of a worker, so, we have actually the father-in-law, who'll come down, who'll, and do all that. So, yeah, she loves it, though she's a little boy, she's going to the week, you know, for me, it's kind of fun being here by myself, for her, she says. Yeah, it's kind of a big old house, who cares if you're here on Tuesday and Wednesday night, Thursday, I go, well, can I retire right now? She says, no, you can't, but, uh, maybe not. So, we'll get there. But meantime, I'm gonna get this, and we thought, four, a decade ago, without maybe renting this house out, why we finally left, but I just need to shed it, as quick as I think any renter could justify it, like, tell me about the bricks falling off, for the. I don't need to, I don't wanna screw it over or sell it to them, but, I mean, I just need to leave it to somebody else who knows what it is, if they can.
First thing they're gonna say, is, I'm gonna have to take this off the rent, you know, and I can't say yes.
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. It's a lot of whole things, like, the door's sticky, so I gotta get the doors all kind of redone and rehung, and then, next thing, I'll go wrong, and, so. And in fact, and I told my wife this morning, it's three stories, top story is just carpeted, it's just, it's really an attic that was converted many, many years ago. Aside from my little girl grew up there, and she's long gone. And, um, I must have left the window or two open. Last fall, maybe August or September or whatever, because I'd go up there in December, I'd been up there a year or something, and hoping to go up there. About ten dead. So I closed the window, and I put them in a bag, but they're in there, they're scattered everywhere. I just put them all in a bag, two bags, I closed the door, I haven't been up there. Someday, I need to open that door. And I can't tell, I mean, you know, it's all dried by now, it's, it's nothing. Well, that's why I was thinking, I'm gonna do like a bait for a year. And then, and frankly, what I really needed to hire, like, a carpeting company, to say, I've got an unusual place. Raised pigeons here, well, I did, I guess, for about six months, I think I had pigeons, I don't know, I sold them, they're all dead, and I don't know what. And the window was open, maybe that much, I never thought. They were, yeah, that's probably six or seven or eight months, they were coming and going, until I discovered. What?
You have a boiler, or just regular heat?
Just regular heat and air, yes, or it was, they were nice and air-conditioned, or, yeah, it was in the summers, it was probably air-conditioned, they probably thought that was the greatest pigeon coop they'd ever had. And then I go up there, and I find them all. Because I think there was like one that was flapping around up there, my dog's going buggy, scratching on the door. Oh, yeah, I remember that, that was a, open the door, I think, we're gonna, so I'm gonna go up and look around, and then, they charge up, what? What are you guys doing? They're killing the last pigeon or two. Oh, my God. They thought this is great, yeah, these pigeons. So they grabbed the pigeon or two, bit them to death, and then I closed the window, grabbed all the pigeons, and get the dogs out of there. And again, it's, we're prepared everywhere, you see by the windows, they've been perched, and then, I just closed it. And I told wife, I told anybody, he just. If she ever comes over, you're not gonna. Yes, I think the point is to do that, before, real estate agent, I'm not gonna show you the third floor, but just trust me there, and, I figure, it's not getting worse up there, and, like you say, it's always drying up and getting better, maybe, so. I don't know. Or, the basement, the foundation's trying to break, the third floor is a pigeon coop, apparently. And I get dog poop on the, oh, I could pigeon poop there for a long time, maybe four.
Little everything.
The house does not smell good right now.
What would you, what would you put a, 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 a price on it for?
Um, if it was in great shape, the ones near me that are the same thing, sold for about three hundred thousand dollars, if I could get like one fifty, I bet I'd be happy. Because it does need, it still needs to work, like, a lot, three, three hundred fifty thousand houses have redone every single room. I've only done maybe six rooms, it's probably three more that haven't ever been redone, like the main dining room, the ceiling tiles, it's, it's, it looks a lot like, kind of like, this or worse. Tiles are kind of hanging down, and, and the sheetrock's kind of cracked. And it wouldn't be a lot, in fact, that's why I have been kind of tempted to, because there are three rooms left before we sell it, is real quick, just have somebody, a cheap, tear it all down, a cheap, uh, sheetrock back up, and that way, the whole house is big, uh. But I, if, we can get a hundred fifty thousand dollars, I'll pay tour and all that, so it's kind of whatever we can get. And it is a great location, right downtown, and right beside a park, so, it'll be good. Well, it's Sixteenth and Class, and if you go north, and if you look to the right, and Sixteenth and Class is blocked off right there, if you go north on Western, there's the home, yes, kind of, home lane is gonna be right there at Seventeenth and Eighteenth. If you just right, off to the right, if you look to the right, as you go north on Class, and it's Tease Street, there's a little Figurite Park inside there.
That's over there, it's over there, pretty close to where Cliff House is.
Yes, 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 yep, right, yeah, that's a nice neighborhood. And the expensive one's the one where somebody's coming in to redone the whole house. And then there's the cheap, and there's a whole other strata where we haven't redone the whole house. But, I might also make it easier to sell, as far as, I don't need the diner, even, I need the people that have some money, that doesn't mind to be in there, maybe no kids, and. So, again, I've redone the dining room, grown up the living room, the kitchen's been redone, the bedroom, two bedrooms have been redone, all the bathrooms have been redone. It's just like a bedroom, that still, if you look, ceiling's falling in, yeah, it kind of is, but, see, no one's living there now, so it doesn't matter. And the dining room is in pretty bad shape. And then please don't go down the basement, because, uh, nothing's fallen in, but, you just see all the brickwork, and this dog. And, uh, heat and air gave up ago, so we put a new one in twenty years ago, about four years ago, we gave up, so I just bought a couple of window units, not heat, air conditioning died, so I bought a couple of window units, the furnace door, so I just, right, I just have AC windows, it's going. So, again, we figured that, the next people can put in the new AC system.
Pretty dry?
Yeah, it really is, like, this last week, it finally got maybe a quarter inch of water just on the concrete floor, but it's gonna rain pretty good before it comes in. So, unless the pipe breaks and it explodes. Yeah. Yeah, that's the thing, so it's not awful, it's not like it's ever gonna be underwater, but you can see where they've put wood floor down before, they've had to tear it up, I mean, it's, you can't really get away with a wood floor, or wood walls, or anything, but, but, no, you can private benches down there, and pools, and stuff. You can be down, it's great for storage, you can store it everywhere, maybe like, maybe you can put a pallet down and store it, just.